Good morning. Today is July 1st, 2025. This is a regular meeting of the King's County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. I got to echo too.
Apologize, someone else worked on the computer. Joe Nevs?
Here.
Richard Valley?
Here.
Doug Verboon?
Here.
Rusty Robinson? Robert Thayer?
Here.
Okay, at this time, would you all please write for invocation from Pastor Otis Whitley, Not Olive Baptist Church? Morning, sir.
Morning. By his with me, please. God in heaven, we thank you for the blessings of the past and the blessings of the present. Forgive us our transgressions and guide us by your word, the eternal truth, day by day. Now bless our future through the work of the Kings County Board of Supervisors and its citizens as they conduct their business. We pray for our Kings County community and all of its officials who serve us. We pray for those in our community who have and who have and those who have not. Enable our leaders to resolve the issues where we live, work, and play. Remind them of their responsibility to serve the common good of all. Give them the patience to listen receptively and be guided by righteousness, wisdom, and justice when making their decisions. Empower them with your spirit to respond in unity to the needs of the community. From your point of view, not only in their hearts and minds, but in their words and actions. In the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll go on to item two, unscheduled appearances. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board on items of interest within the board jurisdiction and which are not already on the agenda. The board will not answer questions impromptu or concerned or complaints will be referred to the appropriate staff. For items which are on the agenda, members of the public will be provided an opportunity to address the board as each item is brought up for discussion. Speakers are limited to their comments to not more than two minutes per item. And this is on items that are not on the agenda today. If anybody has like to speak.
I have no written correspondence, but I do have the first speaker, Jason Kemp Vanney.
Morning, Jason.
I know everybody's worried when Jason jumped up, but nothing bad. Yeah, I just wanted to, we just finished up June Elder Abuse Awareness Month, and I just wanted to let you guys know how our three events turned out. This year was the first year we did breakfast at Armona, Avenal, and Corcoran. We didn't know how Corcoran and Avenal was gonna go, but man, it went fantastic. And so I want to thank all of you guys for showing up and Joe Nevs and Kathy for cooking breakfast. Armona, we had close to 300 people. Corcoran, we had close, well, we had over 150 that signed in in Corcoran. And Avenal, I thought, man, if we get 50, we'll be doing good. We had 115 sign in. And so we got a lot of, we got a lot of people from the community just, you know, walking by out in Avenal, stopping and, and so it was good, younger people. And the main reason was to bring awareness to elder abuse. So we handed, you know, all the different vendors handed out a lot of the different information. So like I said, just wanted to give you guys a heads up of how the three different events went and hopefully maybe next year we'll, we'll grow those. Thank you.
Good job. I went to the one and did a good job. I get there about time to eat. I'm not part of the cooking crew.
Yeah, Doug always does seem to show up right about breakfast time.
Rusty, he brought my plate and then he picked it up, so.
Yeah, yeah, I wasn't gonna, I wasn't gonna, I wasn't gonna say anything how you were catered to while you sat out there, but.
I was taken care of, so I appreciate.
But no, it was, it was nice for, you know, for the community. It was nice for the community to see all the hard work that was out there and, you know, all the different vendors, the different, you know, staff members. And like I said, for, for Corcoran and Avenal being our first time, you know, I had my hesitations, but you know, they, they came out. We didn't have Elvis at those two either. We had a DJ and it worked out. But thank you, guys.
I am Rusty the elder, so.
That's all the speaker cards that I have, and it doesn't appear anyone online has their hand raised.
Anybody else have anything you want to add to the comments today?
Mr. Chair, if I might, if I may, I know later on we may have some speakers on the study session. But I haven't, you think for today, we could, or just in fairness to anyone, go to three minutes, see if that's three minutes we're giving them.
We'll see how many people we have. We might just do a block at a time. Some might be short, some might be long. Okay, I don't want to set anybody off. Okay, at this time, we'll go to item three, which is approval of the minutes. Report out of closed session from regular meeting, June 24th, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's nothing to report.
Thank you. Item B, approval of the minute from regular meeting, June 24th, 2025. Moved by supervisor Robinson, second by supervisor Nevs, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Verboon? Rusty Robinson? Robert Thayer?
Yes. Five in favor. We'll go on now to consent counter. All items listed under the consent counter are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. If a board member has a question, request additional information, or wishes to comment on an item, the vote should be not taken until after the questions have been addressed or comments made. And the public has an opportunity to comment on a consent counter item. What's your board direction?
The movement chair.
Moved by supervisor Nevs, second by supervisor Thayer. Do we have any questions from the audience? No questions in the audience? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson? Robert Thayer?
Yes.
Five in favor. Thank you very much. We'll go to regular calendar. Item five, item A, Public Works Department, and we have Mitchell. Morning, Mitchell.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mitchell Cabrera, Chief Engineer with the Public Works Department. Before your board this morning with the request to approve the construction agreement with AG Construction Corporation for the construction of the 16th Avenue Bridge Replacement at the Tulare Lake Canal Bridge. This bridge is located at 16th Avenue over the Tulare Lake Canal, north of Nevada Avenue and south of Manteca. This project is funded through the FHWA Federal Highway Administration's Bridge, Highway Bridge Program, HBP, and state toll credits for 100% reimbursement rate on the construction cost for this project. The scope of the project is a replacement of the old structurally deficient existing timber bridge. It'll be replaced with a concrete corporate box bridge. On March 27th of this year, the department opened bids with AG Construction submitting the lowest bid at 2.25 million for the project. The project is scheduled to have a total of 66 working days with construction expected to start September of 2025, given the time when there is no flow in the channel for easel construction. This project has been previously brought to the board on a couple of occasions and postponed in 2023 due to the floodwaters. And then in 2024, due to the high flows in the Tulare Lake Canal, we've advertised, we've canceled the bids, we postponed it. And now we're at a point where we're ready to award the project and start construction in September for 66 working days. The request is for your board to approve the construction agreement with AG Construction this morning, and then we can get started in September.
Thank you, Mitchell. Any questions for Mitchell on the bid subject?
I just, I just have a couple, maybe one, depending on your answer. Did this bridge become structurally deficient prior to the floods?
Yes.
So this isn't, unlike the Houston Avenue Bridge, this is, I mean, just for transparency to the community, when they see that we're we're at construction on this bridge, it's two totally different broken bridges.
Two completely different bridges. This project has been in the works since like 2012, planning. Different, different reasons, environmental permitting delays, you know, different to Houston, so we're not expecting a one-to-one comparison here.
It's on the government fast track.
There you go.
That's longer than the Kettleman Bridge.
Geez, yeah. Anyway, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Any other question, any comment? Any question or comment from the audience? Bring them, I'll bring it back to the board for direction.
The movement chair.
Moved by supervisor Nevs, second by supervisor Thayer, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Robert Thayer?
Yes.
Five in favor. Thank you, Mitchell. Okay, we'll go to item B, Administration. Kiri Martinez. Oh, Giselle. Morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Giselle Coit, Administrative Analyst, Kings County Administration. Before you this morning are the approval of 19 contracts with independent attorneys to provide indigent defense services for fiscal year 2025, 2026. The county contracts with a panel of independent attorneys to provide indigent defense services, also known as public defender services. These contracts are essential to maintaining Kings County's compliance with the Trial Court Funding Act, which requires the provision of legal representation for individuals who cannot afford an attorney. Kings County is one of 24 counties in California that fulfills this mandate by contracting with private attorneys rather than operating a county-run public defender's office. As part of the annual preparation of agreements, staff reached out to all currently contracted attorneys to confirm their intent to renew. All but one elected to renew, and in anticipation of any potential non-renewals or gaps, administration issued a request for qualifications on May 16th, 2025. Five responses were received and following an evaluation based on qualification, experience, and disciplinary history with the California State Bar, three attorneys were offered contracts and accepted. One of those attorneys is designated as a conflict panel attorney who will be appointed by the court in cases where the primary public defender has a conflict of interest. That agreement is paid at an hourly rate and used only on an as-needed basis to ensure constitutionally mandated representation is upheld. The other two attorneys include one assigned to handle misdemeanor cases and another assigned to felony cases, each selected based on their respective experience and qualifications in those areas. The agreements have been updated to clarify language regarding the universal scope of services in regard to conflict case assignments. Each contract now reflects the specific area of service the attorney is providing, such as felony, prison, juvenile dependency and delinquency, lantern man petro short, conservatorships, post-conviction work, or administrative oversight. Contract terms and amounts remain consistent with the prior fiscal year with the exception of the contract administrator. In this case, a portion of the administrator's responsibilities have been reassigned to the county administration office under the new Assistant County Administrative Officer, resulting in a reduction in compensation for that role. The fiscal year 2025, 26 recommended budget includes $2,610,500 to fund these agreements. All agreements have been reviewed and approved by county council as to form. Once these contracts are executed, the county will have a total of 22 active indigent defense agreements. Three additional contracts are set to expire in August, and we plan to issue a subsequent request for qualifications to fill those vacancies in the coming months. At this time, we respectfully ask your board to approve the agreements with Afreen Cable, Tanya Lee, Michelle Wallace, Carney Mark Meketerian, Karen Butler, William Pielbo, Timothy Bragg, Matthew Andrews, Robert Stover, Ismail Rodriguez, Ralph Cable, Jared Ramirez, Robert Bartlett, Nima Vakili, Gregory Blevins, Marcus Turgian, Hugo Gomez Vidal, Jim Trevino, and Shani Jenkins for the provision of indigent defense services effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Giselle. Any questions from the board?
Comment, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I just want to say thank you, Giselle and the staff. This is, this time around, this is probably the most thorough information I've seen in 17 years I've been here. When these contracts come up in the past, it was almost like consent, you know? But it seems like there's more enforced oversight there, a little bit more transparency with community. Appreciate you reading out the names, listing the contract amounts in the background. But again, it looks a lot more thorough and appreciate.
Thank you, supervisor.
Good contracts, and I think the attorneys should be appreciative of it as well, but also know that they have a job to do. I think at some point in the past, kind of felt like they were being held accountable on it. I'm seeing a little, I can't say thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comment? Motion by supervisor Robinson, second by supervisor Valley. Do we have any questions from the audience? They'll be online. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Robert Thayer?
Yes.
Five in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number two. Kiri Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kiri Martinez, County Administrative Officer. So before you this morning is the appointment of Assistant County Administrative Officer. The Assistant CAO plays a vital leadership role with the county operations under the direction of myself in accordance with county ordinance. The Assistant CAO plans and organizes, coordinates, and supports the overall administration of county government. My position was last position held this and was vacated in 2023, and so we're bringing that position back. This role provides policy and administrative guidance, directs the work of assigned staff and services, oversees the preparation and coordination of the county's annual budget. The Assistant CAO also cultivates collaborative relationship with civic organizations, intergovernmental agencies, and county departments, and may act on the behalf of myself if I am not in the seat. The CAO directed staff to open the recruitment. Upon that recruitment, it was opened on March 31st and concluded on May 27th. Upon the completion of the recruitment, a conditional offer was extended to Michelle Spear, who accepted the offer. Michelle holds a bachelor's degree from Fresno Pacific, where she majored in Business Administration, Organizational Leadership. Michelle started her career in as a project manager for an architecture company, where she provided project management for local government projects. Thereafter, she started her career in public administration with Kings County in 2014 as an emergency service coordinator and also worked as administrative analyst here in our office. Michelle Spear left the county in 2016 to work for the city of Lemoore for over seven years. As such, she held the role of Assistant to City Manager, Assistant City Manager, and Administrative Services Director. Most recently, Michelle has served in the roles of Administrative Directors for the city of Isalia, as well as Assistant City Manager and Administrative Service Director for the city of Sanger. Michelle Spear has gained the experience in all of these roles to serve as the Assistant CAO. The position is recommended at 15,000 per month and includes management benefit, and the salary and reasons are, the salary and benefits are included in the recommended budget. The reason why it is brought to your board, although she serves at my pleasure, is because of the salary. The salary does live on the department head band, which is set by the board. At this time, we respectfully ask your board to confirm the appointment of Michelle Spear to the position of Assistant CAO effective July 28th and set the compensation. I'm available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Kiri? Comments? Any comments from the public? Yeah, bring it back to the board.
Michelle is here. If you would like, she would.
She's probably nervous. She's probably waiting for us to say something.
Michelle, if you want to come up to the front?
Well, before, we'd like to, waiting for the vote.
I'm sorry. I thought I was called to the front. Good morning, Chairman, members of the board.
Hang on, hang on. Most improvements. We have a motion approved by supervisor Valley. Second by supervisor Thayer, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Verboon? Rusty Robinson? Robert Thayer?
Yes.
That's five in favor. You're welcome to speak now. Have all the time you need to do your acceptance speech.
I will make this very brief. I left the county nine years ago this month. It's been a long journey back here. I'd like to thank the CAO and the board for being willing to let me come back. I'm super excited to be serving the citizens of Kings County again, and I can't wait to get started. So thank you very much.
Welcome back, and we look forward to working with you daily.
Thank you.
You want to introduce your husband?
Sure, if you like me, if you like me too. My husband, Josh, he works for the sheriff's office. Thank you.
Thanks. That's it? Okay, thank you. Well, welcome. We look forward to working with you in the future. So next, we have a study session. This is going to be between Kiri Martinez and John Chamberlain, our fire chief. To receive an update on the county and fire and the city of, county fire and city of Avenal emergency services. So we're going to have comments on this, but this, I'd like to hold a comment till after the presentation is made, and we'll allow everybody to come up and speak when they want to. So thank you. For yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll go ahead and kick it off. We're actually going to do a tag team, so I'll start it off, then Alex, and back to me, and then Mr. Chamberlain will also chime in on here. So we have about 35 slides, so please bear with us. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, again, members of your board. Kiri Martinez, County Administrative Officer. So we have a study session regarding the fire services with city of Avenal. At two, on Tuesday, June 24th, at the regular meeting, the Board of Supervisors received a consensus from the board to bring a study session, which outlines the history of the county-provided services in Avenal, status of negotiations, as well as financing of past and currently proposed fire and emergency contract with the city. I will not pass it on to Alex.
Thank you, CAO Martinez, and good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Alex C. Walker, Administrative Analyst, Kings County Administration. In the next few slides, Chief Chamberlain and I will share some details regarding the history of fire services in the city of Avenal. Beginning with some background information, California Government Code provides a statutory authority that authorizes the Board of Supervisors to contract with a city for the performance of city functions such as fire service. Kings County Fire has provided fire and emergency services to the city of Avenal since its incorporation. It's important to note that the city of Avenal always has 24/7, 365 days a year, fire and emergency services protection from the county, and there's never a gap of fire service protection. Moving in the next slide, please. On screen, you'll see some recent statistics from Fire Station 12, located and serving the city of Avenal. 2025 year-to-date, as of yesterday morning, is a total of 346 calls, in 2024, 634, 2023, 572, and in 2022, 552. These statistics highlight the incredible service of Kings County firefighters and of the community of Avenal from fires, emergency medicals, hazardous conditions, and more. Next slide, please. The county has 10 active fire stations. The city of Avenal is served by Fire Station 12. The station always maintains two O staffing, meaning that at all times, there is a fire captain and engineer. There are three shifts at work repeated schedule, which will be discussed in a later slide. Station 12 houses four apparatuses. Engine 12, which is from 2008, is a type one and two, and it typically responds to structural fires and is the most common type of fire truck, just for those in the audience. Engine 212 from 1996 is also type one-two and serves as a backup for Engine 12. Engine 312 from 2014 is a type three, which you could think of as a four-wheel drive and making it easier to navigate rough terrain. And then Patrol 12 from 2002 is a type six apparatus, which provides maneuverability and is used in various fire suppression responses. All apparatuses are equipped with the tools needed for the job, such as medical supplies, hand tools, and more. I'll now pass the floor to County Fire Chief John Chamberlain to speak further on this matter.
Thank you, Alex. John Chamberlain, your county fire chief. Thank you, members of the board, Honorable Chair. Next slide, please. So I'm going to talk to you this morning just briefly about mutual aid versus automatic aid and kind of what that means. Mutual aid basically falls under the California Disaster and Civil Defense Master Mutual Aid Agreement established in 1950. It gets updated annually related to that. It's necessary and desirable that a cooperative agreement be executed for the exchange of such mutual aid on a local, county-wide, regional, statewide, and even the interstate basis. However, interestingly enough, mutual aid is not reimbursable. Most people don't realize that. So anything we send on a mutual aid basis, we're not going to recover that cost on the back end. And that same principle goes for automatic aid as we go through this. So just keep, kind of keep that in the back of your mind. It's interesting to note that the local official that's responsible for the jurisdiction maintains that responsibility throughout the process of whatever this is being implemented for, for purposes of disaster. So they still have to maintain command and control of that. Therefore, it falls back, and there is a financial burden on the local jurisdiction if mutual aid is in fact incorporated. The policy or procedure and plan that is implemented or written actually has to go to the state for approval. And basically, it's incorporated into the statewide master mutual aid plan. Interestingly enough, and this is where it really comes burdensome, the idea of the mutual aid agreement was that no single jurisdiction can actually afford or properly staff or maintain the resources for every particular situation. That's what mutual aid was designed for. That being said, the expectation is you will mobilize whatever you can give to your counterparts that would be in need. There is no requirement. And I would tell you then, in this organization, in my six days that I've been here, listening to the radio and talking to people, we are not in a position where we're going to be able to lend resources out on a regular basis. If we have something happening, we're going to be tapped ourselves. So us sending stuff to people is going to be strapped. So if Avenal decided to pair off, there is a strong likelihood, depending on the scope of the emergency, that we would in fact not be able to provide that resource available. We would provide what we could when we could, but we're not necessarily going to be able to be big brother and come on in there and provide everything that's available.
Sir, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Are you saying that you're worried about resources being so strapped that we won't be able to respond if called to fires in Southern California or just like in the past where our firefighters get deployed out?
In addition to that, correct. Yeah, this is, and this is more, I'm looking at this more on a local emergency basis. But, but in the event that we did have resources that are deployed out, like I was looking this morning, there's over, there's a thousand firefighters down in the city of Banning this morning, for example, over 100 fire engines. That's, that mobilization is not a small task, and I can walk you through if you really want to hear what the whole process is to mobilize those resources. But it's pretty labor-intensive and I won't say bureaucratic, but it kind of is on the back end because there's dollars involved. But at a local level, should they have a fire impinge on the community or some type of disaster impending on the community, rail, truck, something along those lines, and we had to send resources over if we had our own problem with evacuations, there's not an expectation by law that we are going to be able to provide those resources and bail them out, if that makes sense. Specifically says it will not be reimbursed. Now, automatic aid, coincidentally enough, is assistance basically that we would provide on a consensual basis. So basically, mutual aid is help. We don't, we're out strapped, we got, we have, we need some help, send wherever you can send. Automatic aid would be basically, we would agree to send them one engine. They have an engine, we would send them an engine, and it would be reciprocal along the way. There'd be no cost exchange at the end of the year. You typically look at it, make sure it's a true up and the agreement makes sense. But other than that, you're, you're providing the same thing, one engine. Because they wouldn't have the resources on the back end to do that if they decided to do their own thing. That being said, there's specific things that go along with that, level of training. So in order to enter into automatic, a true automatic aid agreement, they would have to be reciprocally trained. We wouldn't have to know exactly what it is we're getting in order to work them into our policies, meet OSHA standards, et cetera. So that would be of concern to me. I'd have to validate all that before I'd be willing to recommend any type of automatic aid or reciprocal agreement on the back end of that. So if they chose to do that, it would certainly probably, I would say, would certainly be a mutual aid agreement on the initial and based on what resources we do have available. Again, no cost recovery expectations on an automatic aid agreement. And there's no, actually is no, no specific requirement that we would enter into that agreement, even though we are the county and they are a city within the county. We have no obligation to do that either. I would tell you that both mutual aid and automatic aid agreements, even though there's been presentations said that insurance rates won't be affected by pairing off into their own things, I can firmly assure you. ISO looks at your agreements. They want to see what number of personnel you can deploy, how much water you can get on the fire, how far the travel is, what their level of training is, et cetera. So there is going to be an impact to insurance rates regardless of what that is. So that's, that is, I think that's kind of been misrepresented along the way. So, and with that, I'll turn it back over to Alex.
And I'll pass the floor back to CAO Martinez.
Thank you, Alex. So just to kind of give you a contract status, so on June 27th, 2023, the county and Avenal entered its, into its most recent agreement. And since expired on June 30th of 2024. Since July 1st of 2024, the county and the city have been out of contract, and the county has continued to provide fire services to Avenal and the city. The county has proactively negotiated with the city of Avenal through 2024 to present day. Since fall of 2024, the county has provided Avenal with extensive analysis data and good faith to address the concerns raised by the city of Avenal on the contract cost. In response to the city's feedback, the county has made several concessions during the negotiation, negotiation process, including the removal of certain costs to help in mutually agreeable solution. It should be noted that the county has received payment for the current year that we are out of contract in the amount of $425,000, which is what was contracted in 2023. We are proposing a $450,000 this past year, so it would be an additional $25,000 from that, from the city for that year. Throughout all the contracts, the city have, Avenal has been subsidized from the county, and we will explain that process as the city only pays a portion of the actual cost for the fire and emergency services will be demonstrated in the upcoming slides.
And that, one of CAO, so the fiscal year goes starts, right? With July 1st.
This would be year two, considered a year two.
So when you say the last payment from Avenal, is that covered as we go into the new fiscal year?
It doesn't cover the full amount, but it covers a portion of the amount. So this slide, actually, before we dive in, I wanted to give you a little bit of history. So this slide was from a study session that our, that actually a fire staff did in 2018. At the camp, at the time, the county was also still picking up the cost from the city. So I'd like to kind of highlight it. I'll bring up the slide at the end to compare both of the contracts. But again, it's just to show the board members that in 2018, at that time, the station cost was about $1 million, and the operating cost was about $882,000 with admin charges included in there. And so there was an unreimbursed cost seven years ago. So as we move forward, I just want to, you know, indicate this was open to the public, and we put our source there. It was from our board agreement reference in 2018. So there's a few fundamental services, and why we talk about the revenues and expenses is because it's really important to talk about the why, 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 how we got here. So the types of service and levels provided by cities and county and available funding sources and the state, and the level of state mandates are all a factor. So cities generally provide municipal services to the residents, which is like police, utilities, parks. These levels of services are generally governed by local management and fiscal policies. Cities can, to a significant degree, control. Cities can, to a significant degree, control both the sides of the revenue expenditure equation through land development policies, service fees, and expenditure level decisions. As opposed to counties, counties provide countywide services to areas of the county, both incorporated and unincorporated. Example of these is like the jails, the juvenile detention, district attorney, public defender contracts we passed today, probation, public health, elections, those are all, um, so, we are subdivisions of the state of California, so those are mandated services that the counties have provide. Our revenue sources are primarily driven by state mandated programs. And service level with less control on either side of that equation that I mentioned earlier. The reason why I mention this is because how important our revenues are for the services that we have to continue to provide. We will talk about property tax share agreements, and I should note that it is the county's main goal in a tax share agreement to retain property tax funding in an annexation area sufficient to, to pay for all the anticipated countywide services to the residents, both incorporated and unincorporated. Thank you, next slide. So here's a good explanation of the county revenues for, this is a chart that we presented on the far right, chart two. This is what we presented to your board on June seventeenth, when we passed our recommended budget. This shows revenues only. So chart two illustrates the state and federal dollars are the largest source of revenues for counties at fifty four percent. More than half of the budget on the purple piece of the pie, general taxes around seventy eight million. This includes the county's fund balance, meaning that the three primary revenue sources for a county is that state and federal, the purple pie, the, uh, general taxes, which is the property taxes, and the fund balance. And what is the fund balance? That is the remaining amount of money that we do not spend during the year. Those are our three revenue sources. Each city generates a good portion of general fund that can be paid for things like their public safety from their sales tax. And most recently, all the cities have increased their sales tax displayed here. The county tax has not increased their sales tax and the rate base has seven point two five percent. While all incorporated rates have a higher tax, sales tax rate. The county receives about four point five million of general sales tax, but that major slice of the pie, the general taxes, is made up of property tax. Um, the next slide, we'll go dive into, um, we'll show our expenses. So this chart again was presented at our recommended budget, and this shows the expense. So in fiscal year twenty five, twenty six, recommended, the expenses are at four hundred and four million dollars. So chart five illustrates, we call it the Pac-Man. You could see that the county's general fund is and is discretionary, non-discretionary. What does that mean? Well, the blue part, the largest expense, three hundred and twenty seven million dollars of the county fund, we cannot touch. Those are controls of expenses that are mandated programs. Most of these are from our state and federal funding. Now, when we move over to the green, that's about seventy seven million. That's discretionary of the Board of Supervisors to make decisions how we allocate these funds. These in green are our general fund departments, the ones I mentioned that were mandated to provide jail, sheriff, DA, elections, those ones. It's important to note that the board has always prioritized our public safety and a chunk of our, uh, good portion of our general fund goes to our sheriffs. The recommended budget of, um, includes, and you'll see that purple bar is, um, general fund contributions to other funds. So what that means is that is, um, ten million goes to other funds, which of four million of that purple pie is being infused to the fire fund. This is a significant contribution and is unsustainable and underscores why the county is seeking to fully recover the cost through its service contract. Historically, the fire fund was always self-sustaining. However, in recent year, that has no longer been the case. This shift is primarily due to operational expenses outpacing revenue growth. Service contract payments falling short of actual service costs and the stagnant out-of-county fire incidents reimbursements. With limited resources, it is imperative that all available avenues, including these contractual agreements, are fully leveraged to ensure fiscal prudence and protect the general fund, which again supports the essential and mandated county services outside of the state and federal programming mentioned in blue. I'll now pass it over to Alex, who's, he's actually going to talk about the property tax share agreements.
Thank you, CEO Martinez. In the next few slides, I'll provide a brief overview of the county credit mentioned earlier and that we provide to the city to pay for the contract of Avonall, provide details regarding property tax share agreements and property taxes in general. On the right-hand side, you'll see some key legislation dates. In nineteen seventy eight, California voters passed Proposition thirteen. Proposition thirteen dealt with the valuation side of the property tax equation. And the city receives its property tax share through the Assembly Bill, uh, AB eight allocation formula. Prop thirteen significantly reduced property tax rates and capped the ability of local governments to raise them. After Prop thirteen, AB eight, which was passed in nineteen seventy nine, established a fixed allocation system for distributing property taxes among local agencies. Later in nineteen eighty, California Revenue and Tax Code, Section ninety nine, was created to provide a mechanism for reallocating property taxes when jurisdictional changes occur, such as an annexation, sitting corporation, et cetera. Properties are assessed and property taxes are collected and distributed at the county level to local governments. Property tax revenue has become a major source of revenue for the local government, as CEO Martinez mentioned, and in many cases, the largest source of revenue. There are numerous duties related to the property tax mandated to the county auditor controllers, including allocation apportionment of property taxes to the county taxing jurisdictions. On the left-hand side, you can see a dollar bill, which represents one dollar of county property tax revenue. With AB eight apportionment factor applied, the general allocation of a county's property tax dollar is as follows. About fifty two percent goes to schools, which is represented in the green piece. Twenty two percent goes to the county general fund, fire fund, and library fund, represented in purple. About thirteen percent to the redevelopment agencies, such as redevelopment agencies that used to be in Avonall, Corcoran, LeMour, and Hanford, which is represented in the orange piece. About six percent goes to the cities incorporated, cities represented in black. About six percent also goes to special districts, represented in brown, and about zero point zero eight percent goes to county lights, which is represented in the pink piece. This is important because when the county collects one dollar of property tax, it is only keeping roughly twenty two percent represented by the purple piece. The county distributes the other portion of the dollar, as enumerated on the slide, described. In a typical setting, the county will collect property taxes for both properties within the county and unincorporated territories, as well as property taxes within a incorporated city. In both settings, the county allocates the dollar as shown on the slide, with the city in question receiving its share of the black piece. When a jurisdiction boundary changes, such as through an annexation, the county and the affected city or district must negotiate a property tax revenue exchange, which takes us into our next topic, tax share agreements. Can we go to the next slide, please? So tax share agreements are a contractual agreement required to be in place prior to an annexation. Before a property can be annexed into a city, the kit, the city and county must establish an agreement to delineate any property tax revenue sharing, specific to that annexation. These agreements may be done pre-annexation or on a continual basis, as is the case with the county's existing tax share agreements. The county currently has four tax share agreements with each of the county's incorporated cities. These agreements pertain to the portion of the county revenue from the one percent property tax dollars collected, represented again by that purple piece, if you recall from the previous slide, of the county's property tax dollar. All four agreements were established in nineteen ninety one and renew automatically for five-year terms, unless a new agreement is reached or the current agreement is terminated. The terms vary per agreement, with the Avonall rate being twenty point four percent of the county share that goes into the county general fund, represented of the red piece of the dollar, which is the portion of the county's general fund dollar, again represented in purple. The value is based on the total tax base and the share fluctuates with annexations and property values assessed. Moving on to the next slide, the chart on the screen will provide a simplified view of this process. On the top left-hand side, you can see that a property tax is collected by the county. Shifting to the top right, the AB eight apportionment factor is applied to that revenue, is distributed outlined in the previous slide. However, with a tax share agreement in place, cities may receive an additional allocation of the county's money. The revenue that is subject to a tax share agreement is the purple piece, which is the county general fund and fire fund. If there is a tax share agreement in place, the city receives their agreed-upon allocation in addition to the black piece earlier mentioned. Overall, tax share agreement dollars are the county's money, made up of a portion of the, what the county receives in property taxes. These agreements are funded by the county general fund for Avonall and Corcoran, and the county general fund and fire fund for LeMour and Hanford. Any changes to tax share agreements require negotiation, mutual agreement, LAFCO approval, and board approval. Furthermore, changes or termination to tax share agreements only apply to future annexations. Nothing will change for property that was previously annexed. And I'll pass the floor back to Curia for some context. And it goes on to the next slide.
This is where we kind of wanted to talk about, remind you both of where that property tax agreement. And the reason why we, we're talking about property tax share agreement is because the county gives Avonall a county credit for that, um, red piece that Alex had mentioned that we'll go into dive. So that's why we wanted to explain to the board. What are these property tax share agreement? What is this county credit? And how is this being applied? And to this point, it's been a policy decision to apply that credit to the city. It is not a requirement. It's nothing that lives in the agreement. And, and we just really wanted to emphasize that, but wanted to give you the backstory of the property tax share agreement and also what that dollar stands for. Alex?
Thank you. If we could go on to the next slide, please, Michael. That it, we better understand where county property tax revenues go, we can illustrate this further. And the image on screen illustrates this practice. On the left side, you have the property of an unincorporated county territory. And on the right, you have an incorporated city. We're just going to call it City A. And by default, in a no annexation context, there are basically four steps to a property tax, um, distribution. Step one, the property tax bill is issued to the property owner. Step two, the property owner pays the one percent value of the property assessed. Three, the county collects the property tax. And four, the county disperses the funds, such as giving the, the city its share, AKA the black piece. And you can see that illustrated in the number steps above. When there is an annexation in place, such as through a tax share agreement, there is a fifth step. And the fifth step is that the county pays the city per the tax share agreement. The simple explanation is that the black piece is the city's existing tax share, their money, which is mandated by law. And the red is the new tax share based on the tax share agreement when there's an annexation, AKA county money, which is not required, but subject to the terms of the agreement. Some tax share agreements provide the city with no additional payment, such as the case with Sacramento County and the city of Retro Cordova. With existing tax share agreement, the county's portion of its property tax revenue, again, the purple piece, is subject to the tax share agreement. And per the agreement, a por- portion of the purple piece represented, again in red, is paid to the city. The reason why tax share agreements are brought up in this context to County Fire and the city of Avonall is because the revenues of the tax share agreement are the county credit. And it's because these revenues are applied to the Avonall's outstanding bill, akin to a coupon. The county absorbs the cost that the city Avonall does not pay. There is, again, no obligation on behalf of the county to apply this credit. It's been a policy decision up to this point. Next slide, please. And I am very well aware that this is a lot of information to digest, so if the public should have any further questions, you're welcome to reach out to the Keans County Auditor Controller Office, online, email, phone, or in person. I'm also available to take questions at the end of the presentation with the Department of Finance, but for now, I pass the floor back to CEO Martinez.
Ms. Chairman, you speak.
Eric has been heavily involved, our Director of Finance, with these property tax agreements over the last few weeks.
Mr. Chairman, uh, and Madam CEO, first of all, thank you, um, for, don't apologize for going on with all this information. Because, one, it is a lot, and it's been, um, there's been meetings between the city staff here with our, with our CAO to explain all that. But as we, uh, attend town hall meetings in Avonall and city council meetings in Avonall, that information you just presented keeps getting presented in a different light to the city, um, to the people of Avonall. And so I appreciate that. That, um, as we're here in the county chambers, that you are backing up what our CAO has said publicly uh, before the Avonall City Council, before the residents of Avonall, um, especially, um, um, when you talk about what you're labeling as a county credit, is a vote by the Board of Supervisors during budget negotiations to willingly give that money back to the city of Avonall, the, from the, um, the property tax revenue, um, agreement. And also point out the fact that the board doesn't have to do that, because that money goes in the general fund and any elected member city council, county board supervisors, you know, once money's in the general fund, sometimes it's hard as hell to get it to go where you want it to go, because you need three votes. And so pretty much any argument or conflict on this die is, comes down to that money in the general fund on where we all feel the priority should be. So I'd rather that Avonall would say thank you for that, that we would get some kind of gratitude uh, um, to the board for doing that. But I will thank you, gentlemen, on behalf of my district for putting that money to the city of Avonall to help them during the fire contracts over the past few years, where they have had fiscal um, uh, difficulties, because, because we have helped them. Um, and I'm, I'm only pointing that out, Mr. Chair, uh, because when, when I go to Avonall and I hear that, um, uh, city officials are saying, we're going to get that money back from the county. We're going to get it back, because it's not fair. Well, that's just not true, because it's pointed out that even before it would come to us for a vote and try to lobby for yes or no, it's got to go to LAFCO. And so those board members from across the whole county would have to first agree and vote to send that money back to Avonall and then to come back here. And beyond, and that's the simplest way of putting it, because as I understand it, it's very difficult. And I know the CAO has explained that to the city manager multiple times here. But I would hope that as we move forward and we're back in Avonall, that we don't hear those statements again, because it puts a support with the Board of Supervisors to District Two, our district. It, it jeopardizes it, because I'm here to tell you, in the last few years, the support for District Two is higher than ever. We're up here. We're getting, um, support from this board for Kettelman Pedestrian Bridge, Kettelman Curb, Gutter and Sidewalks. I don't just support Avonall. I got, I got, um, duties and responsibilities of City of Corcoran, Kettelman City, Home Garden. Okay, so when the board is doing something for a community like Avonall, over the years, millions of dollars in help, and it's being questioned or portrayed, um, not in a truthful manner, or portrayed is not an expression of gratitude, it puts that risk that of support that I ask these gentlemen for every Tuesday. So again, thank you to the board, and thank you. Thanks for your time, Mr. Chairman.
So now we're going to continue. We have the proposed contracts, and then we'll wrap up the presentation. So proposed contracts. So here on the screen, we actually have some hyster- historical data. So this is the contract from July first of twenty twenty to June thirtieth of twenty twenty four. For those who aren't familiar with fiscal years, we did it in calendar year. So the blue arrow to the right, to, it goes from left to right is the ci- is the amount that the city has paid via agreement. So in twenty twenty, um, it was three hundred and sixty five thousand, twenty twenty one, three hundred and sixty five thousand, twenty twenty two, three hundred and sixty five thousand, and then twenty twenty, twenty twenty three is, uh, four hundred and twenty five thousand. What the orange arrow is, is that county credit that the county has been giving year over year, that, um, Alex just talked about, is that credit given to the ca- city year over year over the last, uh, four years. The gray arrow is the total cost in staffing of the, are, which are the actual cost of the station. So you see in twenty twenty is one point one million, twenty twenty two, one point one million, one point one, one point one. And the unreimbursed cost is what the county has been picking up on the, be, on the behalf of the city for that contract. So the unreimbursed cost that the county has picked up over the last four years has been one point six million dollars. And the next slide is the proposed contract terms. So this is what we sent to the city, and I will go through and dissect every single section to explain how we got to those numbers. So this establishes a four-year contract, starting in, uh, starting with a circle. That's one-year retro, so basically because we've been out of contract brings us up to date. So we started negotiation after the start of the fiscal year, during which the city staff indicated that they cannot accommodate mid-year changes. So we allowed the full contract to be paid this current year, starting July first, to allow the city to prepare. Beginning in year two, effective July first today, the county eliminated its subsidy for the unreimbursed cost, while continuing to apply the county credit. So we are still offering that county credit to the contract. The, also, the agreement includes a two point five annual inf- adjustment on the total expenses and a two two percent annual increase adjustment on the estimated property tax credit as a revenue. So this two percent and two point five percent is added to that circle that I'm talking about, and this, the current year that we're, we're out of contract. So essentially, that year becomes the base. This agreement is not tied to any, um, labor union, uh, contracts, um, which I'll mention, we are out of contract today with our fire association. And so this is what is the proposed salaries that we gave to the city as of, you know, last, um, this twenty twenty four year. This is the only adjustment we have. So based on the actual factors described, the total station twelve are as follows. One point four million for this past year that we're retro, one point five million, the one starting today. 1.4 million for this past year that we're retro, 1.5 million, the one starting today, the fiscal year, and then 1.5 in '26, '27, and 1.6 in '27, '28. However, the green that's highlighted in the top, that is what we are proposing for the city contract agreement. So those are the costs, although it's different from, from the other numbers of expense. And that is because what we are proposing is we are still giving that, the city that property tax credit. Here's another way to look at it. Next slide, please. This is a graph visual representation of what we described in, in, in the historical costs, actual costs to the proposed contract. So the red shows the unfunded cost, which was the county pickup. And you can see these numbers on 100,000, so 379 is 379,000. The orange represents that county credit. So you see it's still there throughout, until fiscal year 2026, it's still being applied. We aren't removing that. And, but we are removing in this current fiscal year that started today, that red. So that's kind of how it's seen historical, building up to it. Now this year, we are asking for the full contract amount. Still applying that county credit. So next slide is, we'll go into, dive into what is, what is included in the contract. So as noted previously, City of Avenel always has 24/7, 360-day-a-year coverage. And to accomplish that, each fire, fire individual work 18 days repeated on, so three shifts essentially, A, B, and C. And so this is kind of how it's highlighted. The personnel, their names are there. In the past, county firefighters would rotate assignments, but in recent years, chiefs have allowed to stay in a preferred location, allowing for firefighters to choose to be in Avenel if they really would like to be there. So what I'm saying with that is that our, our firefighters in Avenel choose to be in Avenel. Next slide, please. So this slide is the broken staffing sheets that we did give to the city and it included the cost of the firefighters. So the captain and the engineer that we mentioned that are always staffed at the, at the department, the reason why there's A, B, and C is because obviously we have three shifts, we have to maintain 24/7 operations. So if you focus on the blue, it's the $181,000 annually. So I'll dive into the next point, but I wanted to show that that's where that 181 comes from. And that was the captain's salary. We'll also focus on the engineer. But for the staffing cost and including relief, that is a, is the cost of 1.1 million dollars. Next slide, please. Okay, so what does that 181,000 make up? So that's the fire captain annual salary. So the base salary for the captain, it is not a 181,000. It is 101,316. So it equates to 3479 an hour. So they work 56-hour work weeks, therefore they're calculated using 2912 hours annually, not the traditional 40-hour work week that, you know, regular employees work. So this salary is from the current MOU that I mentioned that expired as of yesterday. And so with that, fire captain, they get other pay. So annually, they get EMT pay, fire instruction pay, fire officer certification pay. So it makes up about 11,000. They get holiday and leave, having to work 24-hour shifts on, on holidays. That's $9,000 added annually. Retirement. So Kings County is in CalPERS Public Safety Retirement. So our current rate share multiplied by the salary is 39%. By 2030, that is to increase to 47%. So retirement, this is an issue with all local jurisdiction, is one of the highest costs in organization. And so anyways, those inflators, you know, really boost up that salary of that 181,000. Health insurance is included, 15,000 annually, and then some other miscellaneous things like Medicare, uniform allowance, again, another 3,400 annually. So that is what makes the total cost of the fire captain. All these numbers, you can find them in the county's MOU, they're listed on our website. And also our actuary evaluation report, that's where we pulled the, the retirement cost. Next slide, please. So here's our engineer. So that's the one we said, hey, there's always a captain and engineer. So there, that salary was at the 150,000 annually, but here, let's break it down. So the base salary is actually only 81,000 annually. It's equals to 28 dollars an hour. So the other pay includes the, those extra instruction pay, the EMT pay, about 9,500 annually. Their holiday and leave, again, working those holidays, 7,000. Retirement, 32,000 annually that we have to pay. Their health insurance and annual. So this is what totals that annual cost for a current firefighter today is 150,000. Next slide, please. So here, we, this is the, the station cost we provide to the city. So if you go to the far left with the arrow vertically down, the blue arrow shows the actual cost for station in fiscal year 23, 24. So at the time when we started negotiations with the city, they wanted to see actuals as best as possible. So by then, we already had a full cost, actual cost for the station 12 in Avenel for that year. So we use those numbers as the base. So the yellow, that just, just kind of referenced, it was just showing them what was the cost for all our stations at that time. And then the percentages just reflect what percentage of station 12 is to the whole, to all of the stations. So there is a 5% escalator on the totals of that blue, where the blue arrow, that whole column that used to account for inflation over the year. This is the only area where we added a 5% escalator on the supplies of the station. We didn't add it on the total contract. We didn't add it on the salaries. It was just on the actual station cost. Next slide, please. So here's a summary of the, of the station direct cost. So there is an overhead indirect cost rate, and this indirect cost rate helps the county recover share costs from like the fire department that are paid from other departments like HR, finance, risk management, operations, those cover, it also covers hidden but real costs, like the fire trucks, the depreciation of our equipment, replacing staff during to maintenance and leave. There isn't a day that the Avenel station is not covered. So this is that indirect rate. How we came up with that indirect rate? Well, this is actually a state-approved rate from the state that we use for other contracts when we do out-of-county services. And it is 100% approved by the state. We have to go really dive into the logistics of it, but it's a 14% admin cost. So adding all the staffing costs I mentioned previously, 1.1, the operating cost, 146, the indirect rate, the station cost grand total for that year, last year was 1.4 million. Applying that, that credit, the county credit, the, the cost, the proposal to the city for that year one is 450,000. So at that, so even if the board were to approve this contract, there is still an unreimbursed cost of about 617,000 from last year that we, we didn't recover from that, from that year. So why I brought this slide up again, this again, goes back to that study session we had here in 2018. Seven years ago, at that time, looking at the numbers before, the station cost is still about the same. The property tax credit is, is higher. The unreimbursed cost is just shy about 100,000 from, from 2018 to, to move forward now. And that's year after year that the county has picked up that cost. Next slide, please. So causes for the large increase in staffing costs. Why, why, why is, why is there a larger swing? So I do want to talk about that. There has been an increase to personnel costs. That's largely due to the county's classification and compensation studies. So in 2022, the county retained a firm and to do a study of classification compensations. What does that do? It looks at all the positions, compares it to 12 organizations. Hey, are, are our employees getting paid? What their fair share is compared to other jurisdictions. So in 2023, we actually did a survey of all our employees. And we found that at that time, we, we have 1,700 positions annually, but not, they're not always filled. So at the time, we had 14 positions, 1,400 positions filled. 143 of those 1,400 positions, about 9% were here with the county 20 years plus. About 1,000 of those 1,400 were 10 years or less, so about 73%. So obviously recruitment and retention is an issue. This is an issue in all jurisdictions. You know, it's hard to retain staff. The county has eight bargaining unions. And like I mentioned, Fire Association expired, had previously expired on June 30th of 2023. So at that time, we were out of contract with them again. The survey was completed, we presented it to the board, and on April 30th of 2024, the union signed, fire union. And the firefighters received an 18% adjustment and fire captains received a 17% adjustment. These adjustments are included in the proposed contracts. But what I want to leave you with that is that our board, you know, took the right steps to address and pay our employees what they deserved. You know, it was, it was a very thought-out decision. And the studies showed that our firefighters were significantly underpaid. And now moving forward, you know, we wanted to compensate our employees. So, so the board took the right, right steps. And we continue to take the right steps to ensure that the county is the employee choice. So that's two more slides. So next is the terms in the contract. So here are the terms in the contract. So there were two agreements that were presented to the city. And agreement one is the term of July 1st, 2020. So that year that we were out to June 30th of 2028, unless terminated by either party. There is a six-month termination clause. This six-month termination clause was in the previous expired agreement that we had with the city. It was the same term. And that agreement also has no reference to a monthly sentence that is in agreement number two, which I'll talk about next. But the term of the contract, the price is the same in both, agreement one and two. Agreement two, the term of the contract, same term. But the agreement two has a 90-day termination clause. So this was request from the city for a shorter term. So, you know, we, we worked with our, with our attorneys and we gave that to the city. And there is a monthly payment reference, but it is an annual contract. So even though it says it's a monthly payment, it's just more of the billing, how they're going to pay monthly. But it still is the, the whole term contract. The term contract is the same as, as far as the pricing. Next slide, please. So we already showed you the slide in previous, slide 19. Again, circling is the base year, what we added those 2% adjustments to it. And in closing, where are we at with the contract? So this contract is with the city of Avenel. It's been approved by attorneys and each, and just proposed back can be sent to us. We sent these to the city on 6/5 and 6/11. And the next slide, please. So this concludes my report, but I would like to thank my staff, Michael, Amon, Alex. Alex, you've been wonderful to work with on the property tax agreement. Christina McKay, Property Tax Manager for Department of Finance, and our attorneys for the quick turnaround when we got the verbal from the city that the terms of the contract with the monthly reference. You know, we, we returned those immediately. And I just want to thank everyone who, who brought us to this point. It was very informative. A good process for all of us to go through this. And so staff and I are available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Martinez. And thank you, Alex. And thank you. Appreciate you showing up today. It's nice to have a chief. So at this time, we'll go for questions from the board. Any questions from the board, comments to the board? Good. I don't, you can't sit there and be quiet.
I want, I wanted to get laughs. I want, I wanted to get.
Okay, all right. Robson, you good?
Yeah. I'm not sure if you're able to answer these questions. Possibly mayor might, may have to address these questions, but wasn't there a measure that was passed in Avenel, a tax measure to help with public safety?
Mr. Mayor, if you, if you don't mind stepping into the mic, just because those unavailable online cannot hear.
Alvaro Preciado, just state your name and address and record.
Alvaro Preciado, 100 Iskay in Avenel, California. So there was a measure A that was passed about a year and a half ago. But the intent of the measure was not only 100% for the fire or, or law enforcement. I, I did present a copy of the measure online and we have copies. It was probably between 10 to 20% to fire services, not 100%.
So how much additional revenue does that generate for you? For, for public safety?
Well, it, it is giving us a revenue of about a million dollars compared to 90 million to the city of Hanford. The measure A is giving them 90 million dollars. So, you know, there's a big difference between the city of Avenel and, and other cities and the county itself. But yeah, there was a measure passed, but it wasn't the intent for 100% of it to go to fire.
Right, right. But public safety is normally probably the biggest priority, right?
Well, our police department actually is doing a lot better because of grants. Our budget went down from last year. So that's, that's not a, that's not an issue.
Was some of that money used to, to support the park?
The park.
Don't you, you have a park that you're, that you're looking at funding in Avenel? Is that correct?
Well, there, there's, there's about 20 projects going on in, in the city of Avenel right now. And the intention of that measure A was to help our projects, our city projects, street lights, road infrastructure within the city, outside that city. As you know, our city is the largest city with the acreage in Kings County. We're about 21 square miles. So we're responsible for maintenance on the roads, like Avenel cut off all the way to the aqueduct, all the way to the, on the other side too. So we, you know, we do have a lot of projects that needed to be funded with additional funding from the community.
If you were to terminate the contract with us, do you think the people of Avenel could be served by a volunteer fire department?
Well, see, this is the thing. It's not a volunteer fire department no more. It's not an option no more. We're looking at hiring professional firefighters, 15 of them, 13 on a daily basis and two has a reserves. That's the plan. So the city is exploring, this is nothing set in stone right now. The city is exploring other options. I was at the very first meeting in August 2024. Kieran Martinez was there. He was there. Former Chief Flores, another Flores was there. And, and, and I told him at that time, because I didn't see no, no hope for our city to pay what they were asking at, at that time was 1.7 million dollars with the ATL3 firefighters with Chief Flores at that time. So, so, so I did tell him at that time, at that time, that the city had the right to look at other options. I said, the city cannot just give you guys a blank check or pay whatever you are asking for. So we have the right to look at other actions. And that's what the city has been doing, looking at actions. Right now, staying neutral, which will be neutral until the day we take to take a vote on it. You know, we're listening to both sides. There's groups that are supporting it and there's another group that is not supporting it. So I, myself, waiting until the end, well, that's why we're doing town hall meetings to get the community input. Because a lot of people do not do social media. A lot of people not even speak English. So a lot of people are not well informed. So you just mentioned the volunteer fire department. It's been a while since that's not an option no more.
Okay.
And, and there's a lot of community members that are also confused with that. And we really appreciate the, the county helping us subsidizing, if you can say that. But at the end, I also remember about two minutes ago that Mr. Taylor mentioned the contract with the city of Visalia, about the adult nursing home. He didn't like 1.6 million dollars going to the city of Visalia. So we see it the same way. We don't, we would like to that 1.5 million dollars or 1.1 because at the end, that's what it is, you know, to stay in Avenel, get local jobs, do more things, more projects, more things in our community, beautify our parks, our streets. So, 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 so we're in the same page. When it comes to providing services, I believe that when a city becomes a city, it is to provide services local to our community. I think she just mentioned the mandates of the state. Fire and police are not mandated for the county to provide to cities. So that's why we're trying to see what is better for our community. And at, at the end, that's what we're going to do. I believe council would, this may, try to make the best decision for our community, for our entire community, what will benefit it. And you know, it's not an argument about that the fire department not doing the job. It's not a problem about quality of service, but you also got to understand that when everybody starts a job, they, they start with no experience and the experience gets built up. You got to give that opportunity to our community too, to be able to find jobs at the fire. Now we have, when we moved from the deputy sheriff in 2010, right now we have four officers that are working and living in Avenel. So it's our own people coming and going. And even some of them may come and go. And that's, and that's the intent. You know, the intent to, to have job for our local community directly.
Do you see the credits that the county is giving as an attempt to be fair with Avenel?
Yeah, I, I see. But I also would like to pinpoint that the county is also responsible for, for grass fires outside of the city limits. And it is a benefit for Station 12 to be there in order to respond from Kettelman City or Strafford or even Limor or Hanford. So, so it is a benefit. And sometimes when there's a, when there's a And sometimes when there's a, when there's, I, I understand this mutually, but also there's times when they do respond to call fire and they may get reimbursed. And, and we're not seeing how much it does also getting reimbursed. Or are you going to tell me that the county has never ever got reimbursed from attending other fires? I think there, there have been cases, but they've been paid for it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. I wasn't going to open this, but while the mayor, while the mayor is welcome, Mr. Mayor here today. Thanks for being here in the chambers with us. I appreciate you taking the time as we have taken and had a lot of late nights in Avonel in the last five weeks with you. So thank you for being here today. Just go on to, to measure A with the, the question from my colleague supervisor Robinson. Going, going, just pulling up on the city's website, measure A frequently asked questions that was put out to the voters. The first thing says, what is measure A? Measure A establishes a one cent transaction and use tax. With revenues going directly to the city of Avonel, measure A will be on the November 8th, 2022 ballot and would pay for critical unfunded city program and services such as police and fire. So the confusion on the measure A funds isn't from the county. The confusion is from what your city staff put out to the voters of Avonel, which they pass overwhelmingly supportive and seeing that you guys are going to be able to use this money for fire. It does go on to say that after fire, street and sidewalk repair, senior and youth recreation, animal control and other essential services. The word project isn't even listed in there, but I understand that you have some projects out there. That being said, that being said, Mr. Mayor, is the people are confused about it. I'm confused too, because again, I'm going to say today here, what I've said in Avonel, because those are my constituents too. And some of them are here in the chambers here today. And that is that as I worked with you over the years and I shared with you how my fellow board members were getting impatient with subsidizing Avonel. And even over the years, when I use the term supervisor, I tell you, I didn't like it. What do you mean you're subsidizing Avonel? But I mean, that's technically the truth. And so over the years, if they've supported and, and helped, the confusion with the measure A applies to me too. Cause as I've shared that with you and the city manager, you guys assured me that be patient, we're going to put this measure A out to the voters. We start getting some revenue. Now we're going to have some, some monies here to help take care of the fire contract. I brought those messages back to the board. So you can see my confusion when now as our C A O waited six months patiently and emailing your city manager and saying, when are we going to start these talks? Give us a response to these numbers. We're going to be out of fire contract. I need to go to the board with a contract. As she's patiently waiting, the only thing we get on May 16th is a letter from your city manager that says that City of Avonel no longer is going to be in, asking for services from Kings County Fire Department as the city is going to go to a volunteer fire department. Now I do understand now, and I thank you that since Councilman Ricardo Vertigo made a motion that your council passed to resend that letter, the city manager sent a second letter to the C A O rescinding that. So I get that now the volunteer is off the table and you're, now you're looking at the professional with that. So I want to help you with that confusion. That stuff is now gone. It's in the past and thank you for that. But that's, that's where that confusion comes from. It's not, it's not on the board. It's not the county. And so what I wanted to express is on another comment you made, the county is not against you. I'm not against you. I'm your county representative and for 17 years, we have worked together. There's three city council members in attendance here today and your city manager. All I want is that when you leave this chambers, ask any questions you want. And you already started asking some questions. Thank you for that. But I want you guys to leave with the information. So when we go back to Avonel, I don't know if there's going to be another town hall meeting. But if there is, that we just get the facts out. Cause I don't like this perception that we are in conflict. I've never been against a city council and my records show strong on that. These gentlemen know, all I do is fight for my district. I don't fight with my district. But there's this perception now that the county is against you. We're not, we, we only started attending because, and what we asked for when you leave, go sell any idea to, to our constituents. That's your job. You're elected just like me. You guys came up with some ideas, fine. Sell them to the community without throwing the county under the bus. Sell your fire, professional fire department idea to our constituents without painting the county in a negative light. Because a lot of what our C A O and our staff presented today, those are the facts on the property tax revenue that you, you're probably not going to get that back. Two, we're paying that towards your bill, not the city manager who takes those numbers and inflates the bill and constantly throws up slideshow presentations to our constituents showing inflated bills. When clearly he has been here and he has seen everything that you just saw today, he saw here in, in meetings when we, when you voted to reopen negotiations. And so that's the frustration. So please, let's just leave with the facts today and then go back and do whatever you got to do. And if the people of Avonel say, we don't want the county firefighters, we want our own professional firefighters. And you sell that, then fine, then guess what? My job is to make sure you have the best professional city fire department in state of California. Cause then I'll be fighting like hell for you if that's what the people want. Cause I'm just a representative too. So that's, that's what I want, Mr. Mayor. So again, thank you for being here and thank you for asking questions. Keep asking.
I just would like to answer to your comments. You know, one of the, it says the street lights, we, we're working on street lights right now. We're also working on doing maintenance on north of the skyline. The whole half of the town will be resurfaced. Also next year, the south side of skyline will be resurfaced. We're just going to open up our community center, which is going to require a recreation director. We didn't have one before. We're also July 12th, we're going to open our support complex. So that's going to need additional city workers, maybe part timers to take care of that. So the city is moving, is progressing. So we have to, we're on a limited budget too, like the county is. We understand, we understand your situation with the fire, especially over time. Because I'm being part of the meetings with, with the, you know, the county meetings, CAC card and policy council and everything. So I understand the need of the county on being, being on a tight budget too. Races, like she mentioned, you know, you gotta pay the fire people, you know, they've been here for 20, 30 years. So our city has to look at savings. And one of the savings is creating our own fire department. Why? Because we're going to start fresh with people graduated from academy, professional with maybe five, 10 years of experience. Not 20, 30, their salary is going to be a lot lower. Their benefits are going to be a lot lower. So you have to understand that the city has the right, you know, fire, fire and, and law enforcement are not mandated by the state that the county has to provide those services to an incorporated community. So saying that, you know, we're, we're not against the county either. We're just trying to do what is best for our community, how our tax dollars can be best spent in the city. Right now, we're renting our fire department. We're renting the station, we're renting the trucks. We have no control, like the contracts say, we have no control at all on fire services, the county does. So there's a lot of benefits that we, and services that we can provide. We can see that. But like I said before, right now, we're still negotiating. You know, that there, there's not going to be a day in Avonel that we're not going to have professional fire services. There's not going to be a day, you know, whatever it may take, it may take a year, two years, three years. But the city actually had plans in the beginning. The Ken Brown is, is name a safety building with the mind to have the ambulance service, the police department there in the future, the fire department too. So, you know, we're not, you know, sooner or later it will happen, it may not happen, it may not happen in my time. But our city has to be able to better manage their financial budget.
Two things, Mr. Mayor, and I'm glad we're having the conversation, is that one, when you, when you say you're not against the county, again, that, that perception is painted when you and the city manager go before our constituents and continuously try to tell them that we need to go to volunteer service or we need to go to our own fire station. Cause out of the blue, the county doubled the bill. And you know that that is not true. You've seen the numbers where we have helped you over the years. That's why your bill is in the $400,000 range and not the 1.1 million every year as a county has wanted. So please clarify that, because I've, I've talked to your city manager about it. Our C A O has talked to your city manager about it. But even last Wednesday, as we attend your town hall, that's the first thing that comes out of your city manager's mouth. Big, big slide on the screen, the county has doubled the price. Now you know that's not true. Can, can you, can you just say that here today that that is not true?
You can put that table back, what is going to be the cost, including the property taxes. Numbers don't lie, numbers are there. Last year, we did pay out of pocket $450,000.
Yes.
Next year, we're going to pay out of pocket 1.1 million dollars. So how much is, well, how much is the difference?
The difference goes on the property tax revenue that you still, you're still sitting there talking about.
Without the property taxes, can you put that, that table back?
Michael, could you add the proposed contract term slide 19?
And, and as he's doing that, Mr. Mayor, again, that's, that's the one point that I'm asking that we reverse this perception. But I'll hear you out again. Two, is you bring up the example, and I was here early on, it's probably my first year as a county supervisor. Yes, the city of Avonel left the Kings County sheriff deputies. We had a contract back then to provide sheriff deputies to the city of Avonel. You guys made a decision to go to Avonel Police Department. But here's the difference. And firefighters are here in the audience today, they could correct me if I'm wrong. A lot of our guys left the county sheriff deputies and went to go work for you. I don't believe that right now, based on loyalty, that a Kings County firefighter right now, the way this was launched, would leave us today and go to work for you tomorrow. I don't think that that, and I'm seeing them not in agreement. That's not going to happen. And firefighters are hard as hell to find. Now a value, I don't know, an experienced firefighter out of, out of the academy, if that's what the people want and you sell them on it, then God bless you. But I can tell you, it took us about a year to find that individual right there. That's just a fire chief. We interview people, you offer them a job, then you find out there's an issue or then they don't accept the job. Then you got to reopen a national recruitment again. Then the board has to come in. It's a long time just for one position and you're going to have, you're going to have a tough time.
And, and that's what I said, I don't, we don't know how much, how long it's going to take, a year, two years, three years. We don't know. But when the time comes, the time will come. And I don't know if you guys support that for a city to be so proficient.
We're going to go back to the comments and finish up with the board.
Well, I just wanted to take a look at the, at that. See? 450,024, 25 fiscal year, 25, 26 out of city pocket will be 1.96 thousand. And that's not including property taxes on the bottom. That are, the total expense goes to 1.491 to 1.529. So just going from 450 to 1.5, how much, what is the difference?
You, you still don't understand that your charges are the ones of the green. And the county, and the county is picking up the rest. So the argument here is that when you look at fiscal year 25, 26, when we go to Avonel, you don't tell the people that the bill is 1.9. You tell the people that the bill is the, the 1,096,000 plus the 432,000. That's what your city manager does. And so even on last Wednesday, as I was there, your city manager and you tell the community that the county went from 450,000 to 1.6 million. And that is, that's not fair.
Well, 1.1, 450 to 1.1, how much is different there? That's more than double.
Saying is sell any idea you have without having to paint the county in a negative light. And that's painting the county to tell our constituents that we doubled the bill. And so yes, there, there is the number, it went to a million. So what I'm asking you, was that a surprise? Was that a surprise to you after all the years of talks we had, knowing that that was coming?
Let, let me answer that question with this.
No, was it a surprise?
Let, let me tell you this. When I began in 2010 as a city council member, former fire chief, Mr. Lynch, was making the negotiation for fire with the city manager. Every time he was saying there was over a million dollars cost for two main service in Avonel. We knew there was a lot of overhead costs, but he was able to come back and negotiate and make, and to the county or C A O at that time and the board of supervisors. And we slowly were paying more every year. From 2010, if I remember right, we started at 100, $180,000. Then we went to 200 and some and continued to go up until 450 last year. So this is from 2010, in 15 years it went up. Okay? Now from 2025 to 2026 is going to go over $800,000 out of our city pocket. So, so that is more than double. Cause you go 450 double will be $900,000. But we'll be paying out of city pocket and not including the property taxes. That's 1.96 thousand dollars. So that's more than double. So that's not lying. Those are the numbers.
Was it a surprise to you, the bill?
Yes, it was. Because all this time, all this time, former fire chief Lynch was able to negotiate.
He doesn't do anything without the board of supervisors.
It all came in 2018, I know for us, I know.
The buck stopped here, we vote, the credit goes to the board, not a fire chief. The, the, we vote in your country.
Thank you for your comments. Go ahead and have a seat and then we'll turn it back to the board. And have to finish up our comments and we'll go to the audience. Okay. Any other comments from the board?
I, I do, I do, Mr. Chair. Thank you. One, what's getting lost in all of this, again, and we'll agree to disagree on whether that's a surprise or not. What's getting lost in all of this though, is that I think that we should say thank you to our, the men and women of the Kings County Fire Department, who put their lives on the line on a daily basis. And I know a lot of people say that, those words flow easily. But evidence of showing the sacrifice that they give daily and what they're willing to do is evidence in Captain E, who passed away in the city of Avonel less than a year ago and died as a hero responding to a call in the city of Avonel. And that's how we feel about it. That's how this board feels about it. And that's how the men and women of the Kings County Fire Department feel about it. And so when we start talking just months after his passing about going to all volunteer and the way it was wrote out, it comes across as disrespectful. And so we need to backtrack from that. We need to move forward. We need to have transparent, transparency with the community. And, and on that, I just want to ask the C A O three, three questions. Madam C A O, when you look at slide number 29, can you pull up, young man, slide 29? Madam C A O, you mentioned that the original contract had a six month termination clause. So, I mean, I'm going to give you a lot of credit, because from May 16th, the day that we were surprised and we received the letter that Avonel was canceling our, our contract and going to all volunteer fire department, going to a volunteer fire department. You have turned over backwards, trying to help, help them, trying to help us. You, you removed over $100,000 in admin costs. You sat down with their city manager and their public safety officer here. You've had late nights leaving Avonel at 10, 10:30 at night on weeknights, up there making presentations. So all that, what, what also led you to take a step further and go to add the language from a six month termination clause to a 90 day termination clause?
Thank you for the question. Kieran Martinez, so that was at the request of the city staff. They wanted a shorter, a shorter termination clause. So it's always been a six month clause, even in the term of 2023. And the agreement that we had sent to the And the agreement that we had sent to the city in February um had the six month termination clause. But the most recent that's reflected that was sent in um early June had a removal of the 90 day, it changed it to 90 day term clause. We worked with council on that and um it's not ideal. I, I know fire chief, I briefed him since we started, you know, he's, he doesn't think that's, that's good for the county to do that. However, that was a consensus that we made to try to bring forward this agreement.
And that, that's valid even though we're out of contract?
That would be in the new contract.
We're not a new contract yet.
Correct.
And, and thank, thank you. And I agree 90 days is nowhere near the time for us to, starting just with the fire chief, much less the board of supervisors, to respond to losing a service in Avonale. And what do we do with those firefighters? Um, do we close another uh county fire station somewhere else to uh move around logistically? And 90 days is nowhere near that, right, sir?
Correct, yeah. So when I, when I looked at this and, and uh C A O Martinez and I were talking about this specifically, typically my experience has been it's a year cancellation term. They usually let you a full fiscal year in advance, let you know what's going on. The way that I have to look to manage this is extremely, I don't want to say it's unfair. It, it is very unmanageable in the aspect though that I have to hold positions open. You know, elsewhere in the county. Because at any given time, I have to look at this as not a four year contract with one year retro with three years of 12 month services. I have to look at this as 12 three month contracts and have to manage it that way. It's very, very difficult for me to manage that um as we're looking at moving forward. And I just, you know, thank you for acknowledging that. It's, it's, I don't know that any type of transition can even be, you have to duplicate services and almost make it redundant for three full months. Just to make it to where you could actually have a smooth transition and handoff if that were the case. So, but to answer your question, I am currently holding positions open because I don't know what this looks like. There's a heavy lift.
Thank you. And, and um the, the 90 days, the other thing that was, that's disturbing, you know, about the city requesting that, because at that, at that time, at that time, um, we did have the standing letter from the city manager that um Avonale was putting on, on notice that they were going to go to volunteer fire department on August 1st of this year. So the 90 day termination clause to uh, to send them a three year contract five weeks ago with a 90 day um termination clause doesn't give us much footing and doesn't feel like a real contract uh to me. But thank you for that. Uh, the second question is um, when we were in Avonale last Wednesday, the city manager put up a, a spreadsheet of projected costs over the next, I don't know, I think 10 years. And he went from the, what he labels as 1.6 million. Um, he took the bill over the next 10 years and in year 10 told the community that the cost would be over $2 million, this fire contract. Madam C A O, have you ever sent um the Avonale city manager um a bill for over 2 point million dollars or a projected cost that we would bill them over $2 million for fire services?
No, the projected cost is what is in the contract agreement and it was the amounts that we had included with the 2% escalator, not a 5% escalator. So um at the time, um, the contract is, is written, there's nothing beyond those, those terms of the contract. So if we were, if the city would want to negotiate, we would come back and negotiate a new agreement beyond those three years, those four years total.
Okay, and I see the city manager in the audience, uh, Mr. Lopez, you base those numbers off 5%, right? Escalator, not the two? Would you mind coming to the podium and telling us why? So the board can know and I can know why you base five instead of two? All right, well, we can't hear you because you're not on, on the microphone. Okay, and then uh can you just go to slide 19?
Can one of the analysts share the, the presentation? Slide 19. While, while we wait for that, I did have a point to the, what we had removed from February up until, you know, June. We did remove um a total from the contract that was proposed about approximately $156,000 um to, from February up until June. So we already had made some additional consensus as well.
Yes, and, and I, I, I do wish the city manager would have took my invite to come to the podium seeing as how our C A O drives all the way to Avonale on a weeknight and is there till 10 o'clock to provide information to your city. And I'm only asking you to say here before the board members and the public here what you said Wednesday night before my constituents in the city of Avonale somewhere here right now. So you don't, for the record, you don't want to come and say today at the county what you said in the city of Avonale last Wednesday night? It's there for the record. Okay. Yeah. I guess just simply, Madam C A O, I, again, as a mayor has come to podium here today, clearly there is a disagreement on these, on these numbers. Do, do you agree with Avonale's perspective on what they're paying? And that they're also paying us the property taxes of the 400,000 dollar range if that's out of their pocket?
And an attorney would probably kind of say this more correctly, but the term, proposed term in the proposed contract is what's listed in red. So no one sees the additional uh compensation. We don't include the 1.5, we don't include the 1.5 revenue or expense to the, to the contract. That what lives in the agreement is in green. That is what the city would pay for the next three years. If there were supposed to be an agreement beyond the three years, then we would be back negotiating on that agreement.
Thank you, because I have a feeling that as I go back to the next Avonale City Council meeting, they're, they're not going to use those numbers again. And that, and that's what, that's just what's very frustrating. Because as a mayor doesn't want confusion, neither do I. And also again, I see these numbers as support from my colleagues on the board to a city in my district. And, and, and again, I want to thank them uh for that. And I, I wish everybody would just see it, see it that way because that's the check they write. The um property tax, you said that over the years, that's 1.6 million in support. I know any board member is probably looking at that 1.6 million in general, general fund dollars and thinking, well, I, I could have did X, Y, Z project in my district with 1.6 million dollars. Um, but they've been generous to uh vote that in back, back to the community, which I do believe that's the right thing to do. And, and I hope that we would continue to be helpful that way. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Madam C A O.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll, we close out the comments from the board and we'll take it to the public. And so do we have anything written?
I have no written, but I do have speaker cards. The first one is Sheila Verdugo.
Ms. Verdugo, we also have four hand raised online too. Morning, please state your name and address for the record. There's a button on the side, you can lower that whole thing. That way we can see you.
Yeah, this is, this is a struggle. Good evening, or good morning, board members. Uh, my name is Sheila Verdugo, um, city of Avonale, 208 South Corcoran Avenue. Um, I just want to, first of all, thank you guys for um having this meeting and for inviting the, I don't know why it keeps to, I swear I've turned it off, but you know, I'm not techy.
Keep it on.
Um, but um, you know, just for having us here, for inviting us here. Thank you, Richard, for, you know, putting that on, on, on Facebook just so that the community can come out and actually um hear the whole story, right? We, we get a portion when we're in Avonale from the Avonale perspective. And it's really important that we hear all the information so that we can make an educated decision on what we want and what we don't want. And I don't think we were able to get that just with our city information. So I just want to thank you, each one of you for, for doing this today. Um, there's a definitely a question I needed to ask because I'm, I'm confused at how much conversation you've had since the May 22nd. And when the, the, this disagreement, which was, was for a volunteer fire department, right? And had the community not come out, I really do believe we would be sitting in the middle of a dangerous situation. With the city having, having this all, a volunteer. And I know they keep saying it wasn't an all volunteer. When you read it and you say it's a volunteer fire department, what else can you assume? But it's going to be a volunteer fire department and it was going to happen in a matter of months, right? So that's off the table. I'm thankful for that. Um, but since May 22nd, since that was um, was basically wanted to resend that letter, right? Since May 22nd, how many meetings, calls, emails? Um, how much correspondence have you had with the city since May 22nd? Because you know, we just had a, a, a meeting, a city council meeting and um we still don't have a contract. And you know, the questions were, why don't we have a contract? Or have we even had any rule meetings? Have we had any um, you know, conversations about this? I'm just, I want to know that for myself because I know that I possibly not, might not get the exact answers. So from the county perspective or from your C A O and yourself, Richard and this board, how, how many meetings or how much, how much um conversation have you had with our city leadership regarding this?
This will be our first discussion as a board on the fire at Avonale. And the last one we had was in 2018, which we voted to subsidize with their property tax. And we did uh miss, we did direct uh C A O Martinez to talk to Anthony, tell her, see if she can work it out so it wouldn't become a problem. And then we went to the city council meeting, uh, the last one, time for last, and then they ignored us and refused to talk to us or allowed, let us to speak. So um, that's been it. We really haven't anything as a board until today. So we just want to get the facts on the table.
Right.
And if we can think about it and give the board, uh, the staff direction on what we want to do in the future.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I can add to that, I think and the C A O can speak to it. Um, I know for sure two meetings where I believe city manager and Mr. Navarez um came to the county after the council voted to table the resolutions. Talking about Sheila, the resolution um after the May 16th letter uh at city council that would have directed the city manager to explore uh opening a volunteer fire department. That was tabled and negotiations to be reopened. I know of two meetings, I know that what was productive out of it is uh the county shaved off over $100,000 in admin costs that the uh city manager asked for. And so that was give and take, that was good work. That, that cost went lower. Other than that, she could speak to that. But on top of that, um, you've been at the meetings, you've seen Chairman Doug Barboon um, go to Avonale City Council meetings. Uh, you've seen us go to the town halls, you've seen the C A O at the town halls. So that counts to what, you know, what we're trying to do to be helpful. You saw that uh the C A O sent another draft of the uh contract that just went, went from, if the council didn't want to vote on the 90 days after all, because there was uh pushback from the community, they didn't want to see a 90 day termination clause. The C A O um, um added a language of a six month termination clause. And as we know, the council uh at the advice, the city council at the advice of their city attorney has not voted on that yet because they said they need time to review that. And, and that's fair. But in the meantime, they're having the town halls and um.
Thank you.
And, and, and as, and as we learned at the town hall on Wednesday, the city manager told everyone point blank that his recommendation is still to bring the city council a vote um that allows them to pursue and to put together a professional fire department. And again, if that's the city, the city's pleasure and the community supports that and the city votes on it, then that, that won't have, have anything to do with us. I do want to say one thing before you go, and I know you may have more questions.
Right.
But um, if, just a few short months ago, you stood right there with your husband, city councilman Verdugo. I stood by you, the city manager stood there with you, Mayor Pressiado stood with you. The board, we declared you the district two woman of the year because of your service at city of Avonale, at city hall, your service to the community, to veterans. And it was disturbing to me to be online last Thursday night and see you at the podium just trying to speak your piece to the council and hear a city employee at Avonale. And what I took it as calling you a derogatory term, it was very insulting, I think, to the citizens of Avonale who, who um know you and know your integrity and know that you had good, nothing but good intentions. And so um I just, for my part, I just want to apologize to you because you didn't deserve that.
Thank you.
And, and please continue to do the good work um that you're doing. And by the way, you've come across as very respectful. Anytime you come before the Avonale City Council, I don't see you trying to insult them. I just see you trying to state your opinion.
Right.
Okay, so uh keep our comments, our comments are minimal so we could get through all the comments in public. So go ahead, uh, Ms. Verdugo.
And so the, the one thing that I worry about with now this new direction, and I, I know there's some professionals in here that can probably answer this question. But I'm so worried because we have this issue with our P D, right? We have this revolving door of ins and outs. So with, with this new direction, what is our likelihood of retaining? And I know it was on one of your slides and I'm, I'm concerned about that. So I just, if somebody could explain to me what the retention is to try to keep good, good firemen. We have people that's choosing our city. These other people are, I'm afraid will come in, get some experience and leave because we are paying so little, right? There's, there's not much of a payment in there for these new fire, you know, the firemen. So, you know, to put myself at, you know, some peace, give myself some peace of mind is, is professionals in this room, what's the likelihood of us keeping, right? This is still going to be a, a dangerous situation. It's still dangerous. It's, it, no matter what. So if the city would just take the three years and not do anything for the three years, right? Don't stay with our county for three whole years. No, and another this craziness of I can get out. And I know that's normal contractual things or whatever and that's fine. But if we could do that, I think it would give us more peace of mind, right? Saying you are doing your complete diligence. But I don't feel like that's been done here right now because on May 22nd, we were talking about a volunteer fireman, uh, fire department. And then all of a sudden, we come back with, oh, we realized that's not going to work. And, and you know, my bad, that's not going to work. Well, how much time and effort was even put into that, right? And so I'm, I'm definitely very concerned how much time is being put into it. As we go to these town halls and we express our concerns, then they come back with now more answers, right? But answers they didn't have before. Worrying, worrisome, sorry.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, seems to me that some of the questions were made, met for the city council in more, I mean, for, of Corcoran.
Right.
I'm sorry, Avonale. And we can get back to you on your questions with, with uh keeping a fireman here. We have a lot of people that have their hands raised right now. So thank you for your comments. I appreciate you coming here today. And what, what's the timer set, two minutes or three minutes?
I had him rechange it. It's those three minutes.
Three minutes. Okay, thank you. All right, next person on uh.
The next one is Kelly Guzman.
Ms. Guzman, good morning. You have three minutes.
A lot of what I had to say has already been said, but I want to thank you, thank all of you. I want to thank Richard, he's the supervisors in Avonale, late hours, long hours. The meetings are really long, the, the presentations are long and the ability to speak is short. And I want to apologize for that when uh you were there and tried to talk. And I want to thank um the fire department of Avonale, the county fire department that serves Avonale and has served Avonale all of these years. And they served it whether or not there was a contract. And I think it's just me, one person, my opinion, I know that that money is there. And there's, there's projects, but I don't know when those projects or when the deadlines are. Or, we don't know any numbers. But we do know that these numbers are here and they've been presented correctly. We are afraid, people in Avonale are afraid. I don't know that everyone there is afraid. We understand that the fire department volunteer is off of it. We, that's not it. Plan B is the option. It's going to happen, it's going to happen. We've been told it's going to happen. And I was told that the decision had already been made for the volunteer fire department. I was told that by Councilwoman Hernandez when I asked to speak to him about it. And I wanted to kind of just pick his brain a little bit. He said, the decision's been made. There's nothing to talk about. So if, if that decision was made, um, we're, we're just concerned about our safety. And I don't know what, if anything, you guys can do about that. Uh, I do want to thank you for your diligence, for uh your support. I want to thank you for the years that you've given us the, the extra money to cover it. I don't think it's fair. We, there's many, many people. the extra money to cover it, I don't think it's fair, we, there's many, many people in Avonale that do want to continue the protection that Kings County gives us. And that's just what it is, protection, because we don't know, the police department loses people, we don't want the fire department to do the same, so we don't know um, exactly who to trust at this point anymore. We are scared, we're property owners, we're a certain group of people that live there and have lived there many, many, many years. We respect you, we wanna thank you, we want you to not give up on us. We want you to continue to support us in any way that you can, although I don't know how you can at this point, because it, it seems that we're just kinda blocked and there's not really any fair numbers out there. Kings County Fire Department deserves a raise, everybody's got them. We don't wanna pay people a little bit over the minimum wage, they're not gonna stay with us, we need you, we don't know how to keep you, please continue to serve us.
Okay, thank you very much.
The first speaker online is D C Navarez.
Navarez, you're on the line here?
Uh, I am, can you hear me?
What's the first name?
Can you hear me? This is Robert Navarez, I'm the-
D C Navarez?
Yes, can you hear me?
You're up.
If that person is not available, is Susanna Lopez available?
Hello? Yes, I'm here.
Okay, we can barely hear.
I'm here.
Okay. The floor is yours, you've got three minutes.
Hello?
Yes, can you hear us? Go, you got three minutes.
Just, just a moment.
Clock is ticking.
Yes, good morning, my name is Susanna Lopez. And I do appreciate everyone um, for making this meeting available to the public. Um, I do know and appreciate that we all have um, a voice to be heard, um, even though having all these constant meetings um, says otherwise, um, you all just saw how the-
No, don't use our C E O.
Mayor of the city um, acts upon certain actions, um, I myself do not feel safe or do feel that my safety is at, it's um, my safety is at plagiarism. Um, knowing that if the day of tomorrow, we have these firemen no longer working with the city of Avonale, we may not have a fire department currently um, being worked on. I do also just wanna point out that um, you know, they do say that they wanna bring up their own department. Um, just yeah, um, we have our own, very own police um, department, has a lot to do with it, just because it's our very own. Um, as everyone has mentioned before, we don't have uh, police officers that stay for long. Um, I do feel it's important to have, you know, personnel who are staying with us for the long run. Um, you know, for a certain amount of period of time, but however, I do have some questions. Um, some of these comments about the budgeting and so on, um, I do know, and I recall that we had a meeting where they stated that um, had to do with our population, which um, if you, any of you can answer um, with the yes or no, if it's related to, to the increased amount on, on these pain, pain positions and so on, um, that's, that's one of the, the um, most, it's one of the comments that has been said, um, that it has to do with our population as to why this pricing increase and so on. Um, it sounds a little bizarre, but that's the way that it's been um, portraying to our community. Another one is um, we do have also um, community members, you know, concerned about our safety and all, but another comments, we've always been shut off as adult, as um, Richard Vaia has also seen in person. Um, just wanted to know if maybe like Kings County can probably work collaboratively, which I appreciate all the help you guys all have been offering to the city of Avonale. However, um, I feel like we're in the situation where if tomorrow we say, you know, we're transitioning to Avonale uh, fire department, I don't think we're even close to having that department developed just yet. Um, knowing that the Kings County Department will no longer be in service, I am afraid to say that we may not have that department available just the day of tomorrow, you know? Um, so I do wanna um, reach out to, I love you and you know, we have another town hall. I would appreciate at least one of you or um, to be with, with us there.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lopez.
The next speaker is Teresa Piero.
Teresa?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, um, I want to, as everybody, thank you guys, um, I'm going to try not to sound harsh when I start this, please forgive me, but listening to the mayor, um, it just brings up more frustration because everything he is saying is what we've been hearing. Um, so here I go, our city is being ran by backpedaling liars and deceivers. Elected council members are not listening to the community. They're not listening to the homeowners, the voters, the taxpayers. When this all came into light, we were told specifically, it had nothing to do with finances. It had nothing to do with the budget. Um, since then, that's all it's been about, and crying about how Avonale can't pay its share. Um, I believe the problem has, has been, Avonale has been subsidized or is, as I, I say welfare for so long. Um, they don't understand that when you do start to do better for yourself, you put that hand back in your own pocket, you don't keep having it out for other counties to cover, um, other, other cities to cover your share. Um, they, they have an agenda and they are going to run our city. Um, they're placing non-essential projects, priority over safety. Uh, they fall back on a, a questionnaire that they've given city members um, about what we wanna see come to Avonale and what we would like, you know, happen. Never in that was it listed, hey, we'll, we'll bring these things for your kids and these other projects, but we'll take your fire department. Um, when I mentioned the backpedaling from day one, you know, their whole plan to sneak in a volunteer fire department without a citizen's knowing. And then when that was um, discovered and, and enough people threw a fit, all of a sudden, well, it's not that. And, and they're always talking about how they're just, you know, looking into it and inquiring, but it's not that, they have an agenda. Um, somebody had already said, you know, the revolving door, the police department there, not everybody is thrilled with that, it is revolving door, we have people come and go like no, nothing. Um, we were told specifically that the cancel clause in the county, was the county's verbiage, and that was the county that put it in there. Uh, we've, we have been treated horribly by our mayor. Um, I have attended every meeting since discovering the plan to dissolve our relations with K C F D. The ma, um, and we have just been, the mayor referred to us attendant, attending there uh, as a certain group of people, even going as far as telling us that we didn't uh, contribute to the measure A tax cause we don't shop locally. Um, the city manager wasn't able to uh, or uh, answer your question about five percent um, instead of two percent, as he was trying to, you know, deceive the community, that's, that's why he went with five percent and not two, because it all looks good um, to make the, the citizens think that this is the right move for Avonale, and it is not.
Okay, Ms. Piero, you're, you've used up your three minutes, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, and please don't give up on us.
Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Veronica Aguirre.
Veronica, are you there?
Hello, good morning, this is Veronica Aguirre. I live at four twenty North A Avenue in Avonale, California. Um, I'm a longtime resident of Avonale, the community of Avonale. I also work as a community advocate and um, or an, a policy associate. I um, you know, I just wanna come on today, I, I've been to a few of the meetings, I've been um, you know, to your council, to your board meetings and um, also, you know, to our local meetings. And it, it is very concerning, and I'm pretty embarrassed by the behavior and the connection that I see. Um, I, I find it in very bad taste, and I, I want to apologize. I mean, I, I almost feel um, compelled to say I'm sorry that um, there's so much disrespect. And um, you know, and you know, I'm, I'm thinking back at, I, I'm almost fifty-five and I've lived in the community of Avonale all, you know, all, all my life. I, I, I remember when Mark Hahn came to Avonale, you know, and I see these guys and I just wanna give out the biggest respect and thanks to, you know, the men and women of Kings County Fire who continue to come and know that we, we do see you and you have become a part of our family. And um, and we, you know, and as I sat there and I listened, there's so many things going on, you know, that I'd wanna, I wanna express within my three minutes, so I'm probably just rambling, but in my head, I really think I'm gonna make a good point. But um, I just wanna thank um, our supervisor, Richard Valley, who continuously, you know, supports us, defends us and stands by us. You know, you, this, um, Kira, you, the presentation that you gave has brought in so much light and I wish the rest of my community can under, you know, can see this because I will tell you right now, it's very one-sided. Um, our mayor stood there and said that there's two sides, they wanna listen to two sides, but yet stood there and debated? So that only shows what side they're really looking for, and, and it kinda brings fear to the rest of us, thinking, do we even have a chance? And I could tell you right now, it's no, it's, it's no, and I'm really glad that Supervisor Valley pointed out the terrible treatment that Sheila Verdugo was given, I was so embarrassed. I even wrote an email to the city manager that I'm still waiting, waiting on a response from at the terrible, terrible behavior his staff had treated Sheila at the meeting. I'm kinda used to it, like I said, I'm, you know, I'm a community advocate, I work for an environmental justice organization. We're kinda used to that kinda stuff, so I'm a little thick-skinned to that. But when I see people with true heart stepping up and trying to bring attention and their true feelings and stuff, it, it kinda bugs me, you know, it, it really bugs me, and I really hope that the county will could look a, aside from this nonsense and understand that the community of Avonale, you know, and, and then even trying to say that, oh, a lot of people, you know, that are for it only speak Spanish. Well, you know what, I really just, I, I, it's just like, okay, I'm sorry. But anyways, I think it's wrong to try to divide the community, and you're doing a really bad job, mayor, and we see it. And you too, Anthony, I'm very disappointed, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker, can we try D C Navarez again? They did have their hand raised.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
All right, great, this is Robert Navarez, I'm the Assistant Police Chief and Public Safety Manager for the city of uh, Avonale. I've been a police officer for thirty-nine years. And um, I, first of all, I wanna thank Kira, Mr. Valley for your presentation today. Uh, you did a really good job in presenting it, I, I also wanna thank the fire department, all the men and women that put their lives on the line for the city. Uh, I appreciate you, I've worked alongside you for almost forty years. And uh, nothing I say is directed uh, toward you or, or near you, it's got nothing to do with that. And I also wanna uh, appreciate all of the comments that have been made by the community. I, I don't, I don't blame them at all for having concerns about the unknown, I would have the same concerns. Um, now that said, uh, and I don't wanna argue back and forth over double price or whatever. I, I got uh, from Kira, uh, the total operating costs were one point six five four, seven five three and eighty-five cent. Um, that's roughly double what our total allocated amount was, which is the four twenty-five and in our funding and the four twenty-four of sales tax, it's, it's about double. So uh, that was the first amount that we were given. Now, in Kira's defense, she uh, she and her team listened to us, and that price ta, tag went down to one point four nine one. Uh, so the price was, was lowered, but the initial price was the one that I gave you first. So we appreciate that. Um, but I, I wanna paint a clear picture of what the city manager was given initially. I also wanna thank uh, Kira and her staff for lowering or eliminating the administrative cost, which was initially a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. But we also need to be clear that another figure was added back in, in its place. It's referred to as indirect cost, and the indirect cost is a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. So I just wanna be clear on that. I also wanna make a couple of comments uh, on the revolving door. I've been doing this a long time, I, I was in charge of hiring for Fresno P D for fifteen years. And uh, we were never, we were never fully staffed. Uh, we were always around five percent below full staffing, because in public safety, very rarely is anybody full. Uh, the challenges in Fresno are shared by L A P D, San Francisco County Sheriff's, uh, San Francisco P D, New York P D, they all share the same issues, we're all fighting for staffing, so that's not rare that it's happening in Avonale, it's no different than when I was in Delano. Um, so we very well could have those kinda concerns uh, in the future, but everybody has those concerns with public safety. Um, so those are my comments, I did one, I did have one question, you don't have to answer this now, but uh, it was stated that in the tax share agreement, that was a policy decision to allocate the county credit to fire services. Uh, I know it's a policy decision and uh, and we appreciate it, but is this documented in any place? Uh, my question would be, if it was documented, when was this policy decision made? And who was the person that was authorized to make the policy decision to?
Thank you, Chief, yeah, it was, it was a board decision back in twenty eighteen and it was not a unanimous vote. And I, I believe, I believe it was brought back today, it would be unanimous, but to be the other direction, the way we've been treated by the city manager and the, and the staff.
And on, and on that, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's a frustration where as uh, clearly everything was pointed out in the presentation, the breakdowns of the monies, the explanations of that tax revenue, that their own public safety off, officer continues to cause confusion. He's exactly what I said, he's gonna go back and say the exact same thing. So my comment to him would be, what would he tell the council or the community of Avonale if the Board of Supervisors um, voted against using that money to, to the city of Avonale? That, to me, that wouldn't be my fault for not delivering to my constituents. That would be here's fault, that'd be the city manager's fault, that would be any council member's fault who continues to think that that money, that Avonale revenue that has come to the county, that we have to use it to support their fire contract.
Okay, we'll go back to public comments again.
The next speaker is Dave Robinson.
Sheriff Robinson.
Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, it's all yours.
Thank you, I'll, I'll be brief, uh, just a couple of things, you know, obviously been at the county for thirty-plus years now and I spent two different stints working in the city of Avonale as a deputy and a sergeant um, under the prior contract, and one thing about the contract doesn't get brought up a lot is when you have a contract, you have a hundred percent staffing nearly one hundred percent of the time, and so we all do have staffing struggles, but when we had the, the sheriff's deputy contract out there, um, we ran short at headquarters before we ran short in the city of Avonale. And the same holds true for the fire contract, um, while there may only be six personnel assigned, they're nearly a hundred percent staffed all the time, somebody calls in sick, they backfill it because there's a contract in place that they're required to, and so short of, you know, those mutual aids where they do have to leave, et cetera, you know, they're, they're really uh, there a hundred percent of the time, and so we, we all do run into staffing issues, but as per the contract, they, they uphold the contract, and that's what we did on the law enforcement side when we were there. I'll just point out to you, on the law enforcement side, there was a longer transition period when they did decide to move away from the uh, sheriff's office to the police department. Um, but their budget did immediately go up, you know, to the tune of about five hundred thousand dollars immediately, and then over the course of the last fifteen years, it's, it's more than tripled. We used to do that contract for about a million dollars a year, and, and now it's more than three million dollars a year for, for their own police department. Um, there's a right way and there's a wrong way, and, and unfortunately uh, the cities approach this from the wrong way, and if they wanna start their own fire department, by all means, you know, do it, but do it the right way and be transparent to the public. Um, the, 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 the misnomer that, oh, the, the volunteer is off the table now, well, that's not true. On their social media sites, it still says it's on the table and there's four options, and we're recommending option B, which is a fully funded fire department. Okay, well, great, then don't lie to the public about that you're gonna be able to pull that off for eight hundred thousand dollars a year, eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, that is just not true, because if you're gonna hire personnel, you have to be competitive in the market, and the market is the county fire department. Um, the other thing that they haven't really talked about um, is who's gonna dispatch for them, because we're not, the sheriff's office isn't, we dispatch for, currently for the police department, but there's an additional cost there that's already incorporated into the contract that we currently have um, because we contract through uh, county fire pays a portion of that, that cost, which isn't passed on to the city of Avonale. So there's all these other things that are out there that they're not telling the public. And you know, that, that would be my comment today is be transparent, if you want to- And, you know, that, that would be my comment today is be transparent. If you want to go with your own fire department, then put it out there, but be smart about it. And say it's gonna be a two to three year plan and we're gonna sign a contract with this, with the county for three years, but we're gonna move towards that goal. It's super obvious, you know, I've been investigator for thirty years. It's super obvious that there's a lot of closed door discussion that took place on this because they were putting out on their social media before they even put it out to the public. I mean, I'm sorry, before they put it out in their, uh, in their city council meetings, they were putting it out on social media that they're starting to volunteer fire departments. Still on their social media today. And so honestly, you know, I, I just hope that, uh, they do what's best for the community as a whole. And, and I really hope that the city council pays attention to section thirty five of the California constitution, which says that local governments absolutely need to prioritize public safety, which was passed by the voters in nineteen ninety three and went into effect in nineteen ninety four. That's where you're supposed to be spending this, this tax measure that you, uh, seem to have lied to the voters about. Spend the money on, on the, the public safety services first. And then you fill in the other areas as, as needed. And, and so those are my comments. I appreciate it. We've had a longstanding, great relationship with the city of Avanell. And I, I hate to see it go down this path where it seems to be dissecting, um, but they've just approached this one poorly. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Sheriff. We have one more online. It looks like VA, but went away.
She already spoke. Uh, that's all the cards I have. There's no written and no one else has their hand raised.
Do we have any, any audience that might step on forward? To state your name and address for the record. And you have three minutes or so.
Thank you very much for having me here. Uh, my name is Angela Bueno, seven sixteen East Monterey Street in Avanell. Um, Supervisor, uh, Robinson, invite. I'd like to apologize for our Avanell mayor and disrespect to you. While you guys were speaking and asking him questions, all he wanted to do is hear himself speak. And I am truly sorry for that. Looks bad on my community. Love my community. And they just, the face it's being put out there for us is not good. Um, I'd also like to apologize to the entire board. Every one of you were disrespected by our city manager. Another face of our community that when he was asked a question, would not even get up on his two feet to walk to the podium to answer your question. I am so embarrassed and I am sorry for that. Um, these two men, they're grown men. But they definitely did not have the gentleman handshake that I grew up understanding meant something. They're disrespectful men and I'm so sorry that that's what our community is putting their face is for us. And I'm embarrassed. I'm so sorry, but thank you for listening to me.
No, thank you. Anybody else in the audience have anything you wanna say? Chief? Chief Chamberlain, you've had an exciting first week.
And thank you. I enjoy the welcome. Uh, John Chamberlain, you're fire chief. I, I just wanna respond back, uh, just a couple of points of clarification, uh, particularly in reference to the Assistant Chief, uh, of Avanell PD. Um, so one thing we need to realize is that Station Twelve is a core station since it is a contracting entity. And that is one station that we will specifically go cover. So if I need to move a piece of rolling stock out because I have an extended commitment time, we will backfill that station uh, with a hard covered piece of equipment. So that, that should actually, uh, bear a lot of weight because we're willing to sacrifice from another community. Um, there's a county pocket or a county island, uh, that is not paying in, in a, in a city contract basis and actually utilize that to help cover that before we do recall. Um, a couple of other things that were not actually captured in this, um, we don't charge for business inspections. We actually go out and do about a hundred and forty business inspections a year out there. We don't bill them for that. Um, so we eat that out of our fire marshal, uh, bureau. Um, we don't assess them for weed abatement costs. We go out and identify the core problems within the community. We give their, their city code enforcement the, uh, the program and then they're supposed to deal with it. But we, we are actually the ones that go out and handle that for them and make the community safe, do the community risk reduction. We don't charge them anything for the training that we drop in for our training staff. We get new firefighters in and we ship them in out there. We don't, or the recurring ongoing training, we don't charge them for that on the backend. And finally, the depreciation schedule. You haven't seen that yet. We have roughly, uh, I just did the ra- the rough numbers. It's basically, it should be a, a set aside of a hundred and seventy six thousand dollars annually just for that station for the rolling stock that's out there. And so when the, when the Assistant Police Chief talked about the admin fee that was done away with, but the other operating, you know, I, I don't remember what the term was, indirect costs. That isn't remotely close to truly what that looks like if you were to look on the aggregate. So when we're talking about all that, um, just kinda keep that in mind that there are actually indirect costs that are actually buried in the total county operation that they benefit from because we're able to shift stuff around. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Any more comments from the public? Yes. Put your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, uh, my name is, uh, Ron Moran. I am a resident of Avanell, uh, uh, eight oh one North Fifth, uh, there in Avanell. Uh, been a resident there for forty four years, retired the last couple of years. My wife and I owned Avanell Lumber and Hardware for forty two years, serving your county and serving our city and, uh, and loving every minute of it. We decided to retire in Avanell and because it's our home. And I just want to absolutely thank you. Um, definitely Chairman, uh, Supervisor Raboom, uh, thank you for coming to our meetings. You've come to a, a couple of our meetings. We appreciate that. And our supervisor representative, Mr. Valley, who shows up to all our meetings and is right on the spot with that, we sure appreciate you. And definitely all the staff, Mrs. Martinez and, and the rest of the staff for preparing all the numbers for us. Uh, again, we are fed only what our city wants to feed us. All of us as citizens do not did not wanna know this much about fire departments. We did not wanna know this much about city government. And it looks like maybe we need to pay attention a lot more so, uh, in the future and attend even more of your county meetings. We appreciate the way you run your county meeting. Uh, very professional and, and very good. So I wanna thank all of you for hearing us. Uh, and then just to kinda summarize, um, a lot's been said, uh, at our meetings, our, our, we had two, uh, town hall meetings. We've had one citizens, uh, meeting that we were able to get the elementary school to open up their cafeteria for us. And, uh, our city council meetings. And if you've been there, you can see that our meetings are packed to the gills. And ninety percent of our people are not in favor of this, us taking on our full-time fire department. We're in favor of the county. Our county fire guys are incredible. They've been incredible for years. And it's not just the fires. It's the first response that they are. They're the first people on any incident that goes down in Avanell. And what they bring to us is the expertise. So just, I'd just like to say in closing that, that our, our mayor stood up here and said, we wanna give those people a chance. It's an opportunity to hire new firefighters. One of the numbers that was presented to us by the city on our, up on the, up on the board at the last meeting was the fact that it was gonna be for five, there's, there's the engineers, the captains, but the five fire guys that are full-time there, uh, their pay is gonna be thirty seven thousand and some change a year. How, how does anybody work for thirty seven thousand? Number one, they won't qualify to live in our low income apartments and they won't be able to afford to even live in Avanell. So the, the big thing at the end of this all is that it's the experience we'll lose if we lose county fire. It, it's, it's the experience, uh, again, the revolving door thing. We don't, we don't want that. We, we need the experience and the resources you guys have as a county that you bring to us, responding from all over the county, from all of your other stations, coming over and helping us constantly has been just invaluable. Thank you very much.
No, thank you. Appreciate your comments. Anybody else have comments?
I have been requested by the C A O to read a comment and we normally don't take through the chat. But I have someone who says that they've lost their voice and they're wanting.
And let's say that.
Um, Ms. Lucy Gonzalez is asking, at the last town hall in Avanell, the new fire chief shared that Station Twelve will be receiving a new fire truck. I do not see that on the presentation or on the proposed budget in the sta- is the station really getting a new fire truck since all those trucks are an average of twenty years old. Apologize.
You wanna borrow mine?
Chief? Uh, to answer a question, yes, we're slated for, uh, the build and the construction and acceptance should be slated, uh, November of this year. Um, the current engine is, uh, two thousand eight, basically to give you an idea, NFPA standard is depending on what you're reading, how hard you run them, uh, typically ten years for frontline, five years reserve, and then you can kinda play it by ear from there. Fif- no more than fifteen frontline and five years reserve. Um, the, uh, the package that Avanell had originally suggested of the five pieces of apparatus they had priced out, four of the five were over twenty years old. Just to give you an idea of what they're looking after the rolling stock, which goes back to the mutual aid and, and different things like that. We're looking at reliability and dependability on that. But yes, we are slated in November to put a new type one in service.
Very good. Thank you. I think that's about three years out too. We've started planning that. So if there are no more comments, uh, I'll bring it back to the board for direction. I know this was a, uh, study session item. And I know that, uh, we, we've been allowing our C A O to go on our own to discuss, to get this worked out without coming to us. We haven't had a meeting like this since twenty eighteen. I know when we had the meeting, we had Supervisor Peterson here, which was a, a no vote to subsidize Avanell tax. And I did not go with him. And I hear about it constantly. And so if I bring it up today, he said, I told you so. And so I, I really respect the citizens of Avanell, uh, and that's what my vote was to, to help subsidize them with fire because in, in the day, they still are residents and they still, we still need to support them. Uh, I just don't feel really good about the way we've been treated by the city council or the city manager. And the comments that have been made, it's very insulting. We just wanna take care of our community and do business as usual. So I think at this time, we'll let, uh, uh, C A O have a comment and then we'll bring it back to see what, what direction we would like to do.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, I just wanna put in the record, um, the city manager pointed out that on the actual contract cost for two years, uh, the amount was three hundred and sixty five thousand. We indicated on our slide, but it was actually four hundred thousand. So if my staff could share that slide real quick, this presentation is also available in our, uh, clerk's, uh, website we published yesterday. Uh, but just wanted to show you, we will insert this correct slide. So this is what I showed you earlier. If you go down to the next slide. So that three hundred and sixty five thousand in red that showed on the previous slide, it's actually four hundred thousand. So the change is from red to the yellow. So just wanna point out, so the, originally I had said one point six million has been covered by county. It's actually one point five. It's about seventy thousand dollars off.
Thank you. And one, one thing I'd like to add is, you know, when I started here in twenty thou- two thousand eleven, our budget was a hundred and fifty million. And that's back, back when the fire contract was a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred thousand. And now our budget is four hundred million. So things have increased and it's not because we're sitting here counting our cash and taking advantage of our communities. We're all doing our part to make things work. And I think it's bringing calm to our community and make sure that the city of Avanell, city of Corcoran, city of Hanford, city of Leamore all have comfort knowing that we're there to protect them at any time. And I think that's in jeopardy right now with what's been happening since May sixteenth or nine, May nineteenth, we got that letter. So I said at the city council meeting of Avanell, if you wanted to be a volunteer fire department, you could have done so at any time. You could have worked with us. We could have helped you. We could have set it up for you, but you don't pull a rug out underneath us and your community. So with that said, I'll bring it back to the board for direction. If we wanna have something on the agenda in the future or the C A O plays out.
Mr. Chair, I, I guess the only direction that I would look for or, or to see where the board's at is, um, the C A O, as mentioned, has done a lot of work, current and staff. And the Avanell City Council has two versions of the contract. Um, is the appetite of the Board of Supervisors to leave it where it's at and a way to vote on any of those versions of the contract from the Avanell City Council. I say that because I don't know what else our C A O could do.
No, I, I, I would advise our C A O to just take advice of council from us to move forward. So she doesn't get herself in trouble by doing something that we don't agree with.
Oh, yeah. No, and I don't think she's done anything, uh, like that. I'm saying she's been gracious with her time and, and, uh, you sat next to her at these, um, town hall meetings, uh, as well in Avanell. Uh, you've heard what she's, um, spoken in public, which is, I believe, the, uh, the direction, the general direction of the board. So I guess what I'm looking for. So the count, there's three council members here, um, and there's community members here. I want them to know what to, the next steps are because it is confusing. So I guess the simplest terms, are we done negotiating and it is what it is?
This, we really haven't negotiated because we haven't, we haven't done anything since twenty eleven, I mean, twenty, yeah, twenty eleven, twenty eighteen. And so, uh,
Well, that would be confusing to me, Mr. Chair, because I believe that, uh,
Well, we've been talking, but we've only had two meetings that was, it was out of the C A O's professionalism to ask the city manager to come over and discuss how we can help them.
Okay.
And then they agreed. And then we went to their city, the city council meeting and we were ignored. And not only ignored, we had to sit there. We left here at three o'clock, got back after nine, so six hours. And we only heard from their council. We didn't hear from the manager.
Okay. No, and again, I thank you for being there more, more than once too. So, okay, so then it is confusing. So, um, I thought that we would wait for Avanell City Council to vote with what they've tabled, right? Let's say they vote yes with what they had. Then it, then it comes to us. And then at that time, I believe the board could say, well, even though Avanell City Council voted on this, I have, I want to see this language changed. Right? Isn't, isn't that the procedure?
And then we'll, we'll give that direction today. If, if the count, if our board is okay with what's on the table to have the city council of Avanell come up with, then we need a nod to, to let our C A O know that that's, we've approved of her decision to move forward on the table.
Yes, sir. Cause I think that helps Avanell Council too, because, you know, they're, they're getting heat for delaying. But if they're delaying because they think they're waiting on us and that's not fair to the council either.
No, we're not waiting on us. We just, yeah. So the, so let's just take a head count. So we're okay with what we've done so far, right? Okay. We're not looking for any major changes. We want business as usual.
Yeah, for me, that, though my own, my only concern is what, is what the chief had mentioned about that ninety day opt-out clause and
I think we should go back to the norm, which would be a year. And if they won't want our services in twenty twenty six, then they tell us in twenty twenty five.
Right.
And we wind down as time goes on and we help them assist, become their own fire department. Yes, ma'am.
I know, I know.
Did I get, am I in trouble, council? Talk like that.
Not at all, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to state for the record that the direction from the board is appreciated and I'm sure helpful to the C A O. But wanted to also state for the record that the board does retain final authority. Any final agreement would come back through this board for final approval.
We just don't want any surprises.
Correct.
So to make that even simpler, simpler, that let's say city council in Avanell, again, they have a contract with a ninety day termination clause and a six month. If they only vote the ninety day clause, then it comes here. At that time, the board could vote to not accept that and send back a one-year clause, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll lean on, we'll lean on our chief on that one. And he's our chief and let him be the chief. And if he fills the years, um, a max, minimal amount of time that we can have to wind down our services, then that's what we accept. I, I think ninety days, I mean, I, I'm a businessman. I do contracts. I have to pay my contracts and you don't get to change them halfway through it.
No, ninety days is nowhere near enough time for the fire chief to strategize and, and also get support from the board on what a new county map, response times, every, when we went through.
Well, I'm, I'm okay with the city of Avanell having their own fire services, like their own police service. But it, it has to be theirs and we have to have notice to, to adjust our budget too. And like you said, he has four three-month contract right now.
And, and I,
Unacceptable.
And I wanna close with that too. Again, uh, for the record, I don't fight with my communities. I fight for my communities.
You fight with your board though.
We, we have, and that's what I'm trying to tell them. So the last place I wanna be is to look like I'm fighting with the Avanell City Council. I just happen to, um, just again, didn't appreciate the way it was rode out and that the county was made to be in bad light. Roll it out. It's their job to have ideas. And again, as long as the people, the county can't tell the city what to do. The people could tell the city what to do and the people in district two could tell Supervisor Valley what to do. If that's the way that I look at it. So if Avanell City Council sold it to our constituents, we won't have anything to say about it. We wouldn't, we probably wouldn't like it, but technically we can't stop the mayor and the council members from doing that. That's, that's just what that.
We haven't done it either. We're just telling them that, you know, you still got a deficit to pay up and you got a contract you gotta be under. So we have one more comment online. Do we take that one comment? Susan Lopez, do you have a comment?
Yeah, good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah. Okay. Were you able to hear me earlier today or no?
Yeah, we hear you. We heard you before, yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, yeah, just some other comments are that, um, I, I think that the leadership that we currently have, um, under seeing these decisions are not a truly leadership role. I wanna say, as you all have seen, um, you know, they've already stated that they're gonna do what they want, whether we agree with them or not. Um, which to me was not a professional, um, I guess you can say like a professional way of expressing, um, the word out to their community. But I do wanna say that, um, I appreciate all of you for. I appreciate all of you for sticking, sticking together with us. I myself have lived there in Avenel for twenty five plus years and I would want our safety to be first. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. I will add with one comment. When we are elected officials, and this goes to the community of Avenel, we are elected officials and the only way to do things right is to discuss things out in the open. And sometimes your ideas may be far fetched, but you need to ask them and talk about them in public. And it makes it really hard when the community gets defensive at first. So you, it makes it hard. So you have patience. It has to go to a vote and you are in charge of the people you vote for your council. So I know if I've had some ideas here I brought to the board and it's, you know, if no one understands it, it gets sideways. So have patience with your city council. And if we get a contract to continue the service as usual and they want to become a, their own fire department, then they have to talk about it in public. If they're talking about it in private, that goes against what you guys need to do. So with that said, just have patience with your people. And Mayor, you have something you want to add to it?
Yes, I just would like to give you an update. Actually, at the last council meeting with the country, what's a tablet? Recommendation on the council member, Dugo, he wanted to make some amendments to the contract. So council did work on amendments that will be presented to the county. And I guess you guys will decide if those amendments are good and we can continue the negotiation. So that's the update. Council, our legal council is working on the amendments to the contract, the ones that are in place right now. So I guess that will be the next the next step into the negotiations.
Okay, well, thank you. I think this, this look forward to good communication in the future and no more surprises.
So then for clarification, then, do you want to direct C O Martinez and staff to hear those amendments out before the council goes to vote? Or do you just want council to go, go vote on what they want? And then it comes to us and then we'll decide an open session what we could, what we agree on. Because now with the mayor is expressing is opposite of the direction that we just gave C O Martinez.
Yep.
I think, Mr. Chairman.
I think the mayor should have been quiet on that one. We could have gone forward, but now we're confused. So.
No, Mr. Chairman, it sounds like, you know, we did give it to the city. The city is going to give us comments. We'll accept them. If your board gives me and council authority to kind of hash out the terms, the what we feel got consensus from today. And the best move, we will move forward and we will, you know, approve us to form, send it back to the city once with that sign off and then go to the council, then it would come to the board.
And at no time does our board seek to pull fire service from Avenel. But we would like to see a contract in place. So we have the comfort knowing that we are going to protect the citizens of Avenel.
Mr. Mayor, all I'd ask that, if the talks continue on, that you promise us good faith. Because what I don't like is our C O presenting certain things to the city manager and the city manager completely presenting them in an opposite direction at these town halls. And I've, and I've asked you for your word on that before. And then it's happened. So I'm not comfortable. I'm comfortable with you guys voting on what you have. Do your own contract, your contract, your terms. I prefer you just send it to the board and that the board would have the ability to vote either way, either approve it or not, because I'm just not trusting of how our staff is being treated out in open public. If it was solid, good faith negotiations, I'd be all for the conversation continuing on and being open minded. But you guys kind of lost me on that.
Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Ricardo Verdugo. I'm the councilman there in Avenel. One of the councilmen there in Avenel, I live about two away Corcoran Street. I just like to stand up here and thank all of you for hearing everybody out. I know when you become an elected official, it's you hear it from both sides and sometimes who, like, what do I do, you know? But that's the thing about this great country. It gives us, anybody an opportunity to speak their mind and what they're thinking about. What they think their, their side of the story is, is the right or wrong, being right or wrong, or right or right, whatever it is. But this is what needs to happen. This is the thing about being in politics. You got to hear both sides and hear everybody out to make the right decisions and to hopefully make the right decision on your part. Because, like you said, you said no way back then. Now that person could tell you, I told you so. But that's the, the way the ball bounces and I've been in a similar situations back when I was in the school district when the money problems were throughout the whole state. You know, to the point where I had to lay off my own sister in law due to money problems, but luckily for her, she, she was able to get hired back. But I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to come here and hear everybody out and hopefully this comes to a good conclusion. I know, I think we're, we're ready to vote on this at the next city council meeting and hopefully it'll be a good turnout for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, if there's no more comments, we'll go ahead and close the study session and move on with our agenda. And we have a public hearing and we have who's here for the public hearing?
Yesenia.
Good morning. How are you today? Thank you for sitting us out.
Yeah, no problem. Well, good morning, Chairman and Supervisors of the Board. Yesenia Karufo, planner with the Kings County Community Development Agency, here to present Kings County Development Code Text Change number six six eight point one nine. The Community Development Agency received a private industry interest to allow for outdoor or offsite advertising structures in the neighborhood commercial or C N Zone District adjacent to a state highway. Currently, the Kings County Community Development Code does not allow for the development of outdoor or offsite advertising structures in the C N Zone District. Also included is an amendment request to require that the lighting of outdoor or offsite advertising structures be limited or arranged to reflect light away from adjacent properties, passing vehicles and pedestrians. And a third request to increase the maximum aggregate area for outdoor or offsite advertising structures from two hundred and forty square feet to four hundred and fifty square feet. The approval of this development code amendment would amend Article Six, Section six zero three, Table six dash one of the Kings County Development Code to allow for outdoor or offsite advertising structures in the neighborhood commercial or C N Zone District through a non discretionary site plan review zoning permit. Article eleven, Section eleven oh four C would be amended to require that the lighting of outdoor or offsite advertising structures be limited or arranged to reflect light away from adjacent properties, passing vehicles and pedestrians. And finally, Article eleven, Section eleven oh four E would also be amended to increase the maximum aggregate area for outdoor or offsite advertising structures from two hundred and forty square feet to four hundred and fifty square feet. The Community Development Agency has the responsibility to administer and maintain the twenty thirty five Kings County General Plan. The proposed changes will remain consistent with the goals and objectives of the general plan. Specifically, Section three A three on page L U fifteen of the land use element in the twenty thirty five Kings County General Plan states that the neighborhood commercial designation provides for the provision of retail and personal service facilities. These facilities satisfy the convenience goods needs of the consumer relatively close to his or her place of residence. This designation is primarily intended to serve as the central trading district of the county's large unincorporated communities. Additionally, the corresponding zone districts include the neighborhood commercial zone district, which provides this designation with numerous permitted and conditional uses of a neighborhood, commercial service and highway commercial nature to properly accommodate demands for commercial space convenient to the population this designation will serve. The approval of Development Code Text Change number six six eight point one nine is exempt from California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA review pursuant to Section one five zero six one B three of the SEQA guidelines. This section states that a project is exempt from SEQA if the activity is covered by the general rule that SEQA applies only to projects which have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment. Where it can be seen with certainty that there's no possibility that the activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment, the activity is not subject to SEQA. The changes to the Development Code are technical changes concerning general policy for the implementation of the zoning regulations. And there's no possibility that these changes will have a significant effect on the environment by the act of adopting the Development Code Text Change. In addition, none of the special circumstances listed in Section one five three zero zero point two of the SEQA guidelines apply to the act of adopting a Development Code Text Change. The Kings County Planning Commission received a staff report and conducted a public meeting on June second, twenty twenty five. The Planning Commission voted and adopted Resolution number two five dash zero three recommending that the board adopt Development Code Text Change number six six eight point one nine. There's also a Board of Supervisors meeting scheduled for this item on July twenty second, twenty twenty five at nine AM or soon thereafter. If approved, this Development Code Text Change would take effect thirty days following adoption. Staff recommendations are as follows. The first is to conduct a public hearing to consider proposed ordinance number six six eight dash one dash two five to amend Article Six, Section six zero three, Table six dash one and Article eleven, Sections eleven oh four C and eleven oh four E of the Kings County Development Code. And the second is to introduce ordinance number six six eight dash one dash two five and waive the first reading. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, city. Any questions from the board? If none, we'll take it to the, we'll start a public hearing. Do we have any written correspondence?
I don't have any written correspondence.
Do we have anybody online?
I don't have, and no speaker cards.
And do we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, good morning, everybody. My name's Harmon Sido. I'm on behalf of my dad. Called Deep Sido, we proudly own and operated businesses in Hanford County, primarily Armona for the last twenty five years, and we're proposing an installation of a fifty foot sign at the exit of Fourteenth Avenue off of Highway one ninety eight. The sign would feature a welcoming message stating welcome to Armona, serving as both a location marker for travelers and a point of pride for local residents. With summer approaching and hiking season underway, a clear signage would, would be even more visible for visiting correspondents as well as those traveling within the area. Beyond its practical use, the sign would also support local economic development by drawing attention to nearby businesses and community members as well. As longtime members of Kings County, we consider this our second home and respectfully ask for your support with this signage. That way, community members can also find a point of pride within Armona and Kings County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the audience? At this time, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for direction.
Do you know about the sign? It sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, I do know about the sign. Yeah, I had a, had a conversation with Mr. Sido yesterday. And so for starters, I appreciate the development in Hanford, very nice. And, and also the service that you've given over the years to, to Armona. Just a quick question, have you consulted any of the neighbors in that area?
Please, yeah, please, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, for the record to council, should I bring this back, open the public hearing back up since we're asking questions?
Yes, I would recommend opening, reopening the public.
Yeah, we'll go back to reopen the public hearing and then continue these questions.
Want me to restate?
No, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so my question was simply, have you consulted with any of the neighbors?
So as you guys are familiar with, my dad, my brother and my mom, they are all currently individuals within the community as well, working alongside those that live in the community. And they have proposed with the customers that live locally. And unfortunately, fortunately, we haven't heard any negative feedback from community members. Granted, that is also primarily within where our businesses are located, being off of Fourteenth Avenue as well as Hanford Armona Road. We haven't heard any negative feedback to support that.
So, so I understand, and that's a pretty large sign, but I do understand the purpose of it because these are going to be adjacent to possibly the freeways.
Yes.
And so just, just so folks have visibility and so forth from the freeway. So I, I do support. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a digital sign?
It, it will be digital as well. So digital for the top where it says, welcome to Armona. We also want to keep ordinance of lighting. That way, ongoing passengers, drivers, passengers, safety as well in regards to that, because sometimes certain lights can be a bit blinding for late night drivers. So proposal initially, I believe, is digital. But I have to get back to you on that with my brother's official reads and stuff with your guys' support, of course.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you make sure that Supervisor Robinson doesn't have any pictures on your billboard?
We'll, we'll keep it PG thirteen.
Telling me to get rid of my charcoal grill.
There you go. We'll try and keep it PG.
If there's no more questions or comment, we'll go and close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for direction. It's a board pleasure. Led by Supervisor Robinson, second by Supervisor Nevs. Madam, quickly call the roll.
Joe Nevs, Richard Valley, Doug Verboon, Rusty Robinson, Robert Thayer.
Okay, five in favor. Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. And we'll go ahead now and we'll go to board member announcements and reports, Supervisor Nevs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kings Waste and Recycling held their meeting on June twenty fifth. The two thousand twenty five, twenty six budget was reviewed and adopted. Even with a projected three percent increase in tonnage, a rate increase of a tipping fee to seventy five dollars was needed to balance the budget. That ten dollar per ton increase will affect each household by about two dollars and fifty cents per month and will go into effect September second. I had the pleasure of meeting with all of you at the Kings County Housing Authority meeting held also on the twenty fifth, where the approval of the receipts and expenditures were held as well as set ranges for salary increases along with benefit adjustments and those negotiations continue with the final numbers to be received later. The LAVCO or Local Agency Formation Commission held its meeting on the twenty fifth to discuss and approve the annexation in Armona Community Service District. An update to the policies and procedures of LAVCO were also discussed and approved. And then the multiple municipal services reviews for cities and community service districts were also discussed and approved at that time. Kings County Public Transit Agency held its meeting and to receive the unmet transit needs a report and adjusted, discussed the zero emission bus transition plan. We're going to move forward on that, even though the cost of buses are totally out of the budget right now, but we're going to move forward and not miss that opportunity. Also discussed change orders for the transit center, still plans on being done by December thirteenth or December first and discussed and approved the Amtrak throughway bus that provides service between Hanford and Visalia and connects to the Amtrak train station. Also reviewed and approved the updated computers and printers for the new office space. They will be taking that space up and it would be nice to have new equipment and keep it all together as a package. The Kings County Association of Governments also held a meeting to discuss local transportation issues like unmet transit needs, local transportation funding and state transit assistance, all being approved. The agency audits were also discussed for funding. Avenel unfortunately has not submitted an audit in three years, and so the city is not eligible to receive funding until those audits are complete. We, we did cook and attended the Avenel senior citizens to bring awareness of elder abuse and want to thank Jason for bringing that up early. Had breakfast burritos and fresh fruit. Some of the tortillas got a little overdone, so I think some of them were tostadas. But it's certainly a pleasure to work with Bobby Wardson and her staff during the month and want to thank councilperson Verdugo for cooking a few eggs. So at least, you know, we'll have somebody in Avenel that can help out with those duties in the future. Had, had the pleasure of announcing a couple of Little League games in Lemoore, the under ten baseball tournament and a few more Babe Ruth Baseball Under Sixteen Tournament going, going on here in Hanford. A couple more games today will consume my evening. And then hopefully the championship game will be held tomorrow. Attended the community breakfast at the Palace on June thirtieth, the American Legion Post one hundred in Lemoore received twenty five hundred dollars to support the activities in the community and it was pretty well attended. And then I just want to thank staff for communication about the Avenel cutoff closure. It was much better this time. The first closure was not as well shared on social media and other platforms. This, I've received several comments, positive comments that they knew more about it. They appreciate that. They are concerned that it will go till September tenth and school starts the second weekend in August. A couple of them were school teachers. But like I told them, the first stage was done early. Hopefully Jim or somebody can come in and give us a little update as far as that goes. Going over to Avenel, as you can see, there's not a lot of work going on in the south end of that project, but I have not visited the north end. So with that, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Supervisor Thayer.
Uh, thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As, as supervisor Nevs stated, I might also attend the Kings Waste Recycle Authority meeting on, on Wednesday or, or 25, 26 budget was approved. I do believe, if I recall correctly, that at some point in the near future, there will be a public, a public meeting or public hearing on, on advancing kind of the cap for those tipping fees. Am I saying that right?
Yeah, no, very correct. What, what the district has, what the Kings Waste Recycling does is kind of set that goal up out there a little bit. So I think the public hearing will be based on a $90 a ton tipping fee. But we're not going to adjust the budget as necessary. The current public hearing that set the $75 ton was done about 12 years ago. We, we backed those do the, the tipping fee up to 40, 57 or 59. And then moved it to 65 where its current level is now. Because we're working within that public hearing, public hearing process. We have no intentions to take it to $90, but it gives the authority, the opportunity to work in that range.
Thank you for that clarification. Did what, what he just said. But you know, when, when that public meeting comes to be, you know, there, there's, there's just, you know, obviously there's impacts to some of our local cities and the city of Lemoore, out here, city of Hanford. Not as bad that, that how, how the, how the, how the sharing occurs is, is, is what is in place, but it, but it'll impact city of Lemoore, city of Corcoran. A little different than it does with the city of Hanford, but just want to be transparent on that. Also attended the housing authority meeting with the other supervisors up here this morning and, and got that budget set aside or, or, or in place for the following year. And then the same Thursday with the commission on aging. Saturday attended a celebration dinner that was hosted by the 1776 Sons Liberty Group. It was well attended. A lot of people there in attendance. Lots of raffle prizes, but, but a lot of this funding goes back into the community through really, really supportive of youth programs and college scholarships and whatnot. So it was nice to be there. And then, and then lastly, I'd just like to wish my youngest kid today, Caitlin, our daughter, happy birthday. Last Thursday, she made it back from Africa after a, a significant stop in Qatar after, after an unleashing of missiles onto that country. It was a little nerve wracking to be a dad that had that. But anyway, she made it back home safely and and today's her birthday and she's sharing it with her mom down at Disneyland. So that, yeah, that, that's on the street.
Supervisor Valley.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Avonale Town Hall last Wednesday is already stated. And then Saturday night was actually a nice evening in Avonale and it felt good to be there without having to talk about the fire situation, but the community came together for their annual fireworks show and their Independence Day celebration. It was well attended. Food vendors, they had a nice live band. I think they were called Flashback. The Rotary had a, they hosted a beer garden. All revenues went to their annual rotarian scholarships for the high school students. So, so we had a good time and there was, before the fireworks, they, they honored Avonale's veterans. They gave them, they gave everybody a medal, which was very nice. I was invited to go up to, to represent the United States Marine Corps. And I was also given a medal. So that was very nice too. My family went with me and, and so, so it, it was a good, it was a good time. Lastly, I received a call from the chairman of the Home Guard and Community Services District in response to the grand jury report on the audits. And again, as we know, these small CSDs, they do need help. They, they need knowledge. I know the C O is working on, on that issue as well, but she did, I guess, simply request through me, how can the county be helpful? And they're looking for information on if the county, if any, can be helpful in auditing them because they do want the audits. So they could apply for funding and get straight with concerns of the grand jury. I know in the past we have helped them. I don't know if we can officially call it an audit, but I, but I know that, that we sent Matthew Boy out there a couple of years ago when their executive director left overnight and just left an array of issues and bookkeeping unattended where Matthew had to pretty much forecennically conduct a forecennic fiscal audit and try and help them get some kind of stability in place. So I can see the concerns of the grand jury as well, but if there's any help, I need, I owe them an answer on that. I'm going to attend their next C D S D meeting, which is I believe in the third Thursday of July. And so, so I'll be there for that. Lastly, one thing Jim Henderson, he was on a call that he helped get together with Caltrans. I was on the call. It was a whole lot of Caltrans officials speaking their engineering lingo that I halfway understood. Except I now know that very simply stated, that's the call that we needed to get passed for any further Caltrans concerns. And now the green light as far as Caltrans sees it and then being helpful to the county to get that bridge built. And so we, we got past this hurdle. So it's a good thing. It was, it was Mr. Henderson put to me. And so that feels good to have that behind us. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Supervisor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's see, last Wednesday attended Kings County Housing Authority with supervisors. Thursday attended Wix 50th anniversary with many of you, a great taco lunch there. And then Friday attended the Griswold LaSalle Open House for their 80th anniversary. So congrats to Bob Dowd, Mario Zamora and staff for their continued.
Sorry, I didn't introduce you.
Sorry.
Forgot to introduce you.
No, no, we're, we're good. Thank you. Anyway, the transformation of that building is absolutely incredible. I grew up in that building. It was formerly my grandparents' building. And, and I'm proud to say that they would have loved what's been done to that building. So thanks to Bob Dowd, Mario Zamora for that. Then yesterday I had the honor of expressing my gratitude to the sheriff's deputies for their hard work and dedication to keeping Kings County safe. So thank you to the sheriff's department and we appreciate you.
You go for ride along?
Sure. Say again.
You go for ride along?
No, I just went to visit.
Oh, okay. Okay. We'll turn it over now to Scirio Martinez from staff updates report, board correspondence and upcoming events.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do not have any staff updates today. We have, we also do not have any board correspondence for upcoming food, upcoming events. We do have our food trucks on site this afternoon. They should already be outside. Again, this is a new program that we have for employees. So any member of the public is welcome to attend. And if anyone knows any food vendors that would like to participate, you can go to our website to food vendor program and they can submit their application through there. The Kings County Library will host its 2025 summer reading program next week with its Magic of Josiah event that will take place at the Corcoran branch on Monday, July 7th at 1:00 p.m. The event will continue on July 8th at the Avonale branch at 11:00 a.m. and Kettleman City branch at 2:30. The event will continue on July 9th at 11:00 a.m. at Lemoore, 2:30 at Stratford branch, and the event will wrap up on Thursday, July 10th at 10:00 a.m. at the Hanford branch, and then at 1:00 p.m. at the Armona branch. Kings County will also host its blood drive next Thursday, 10 a, July 10th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the government center here closest to the old sheriff's parking lot. Welcome. Walkups are welcome and you can register online. For upcoming agenda items, the following agenda items are for July 22nd. We are dark July 8th and 15th. Administration has two items. Chemical waste quarterly update, a justice assistance grant with the city of Hanford Police Department. Ag commissioner has one item on a cooperative agreement with the California Department of Food and Ag for pest detection. CDA has a follow up to today's reading, a development code text change, a monthly report on planning commission actions. Fire has an item on an acceptance of member of M O U between Kings County Fresno to Larry Kern on the California Department of Water Delta Flood Emergency Response Grant. Health has one item regarding the data use agreement with Kaiser Foundation Health Plan. Human Resources has an update to the job specification and salary rate adjustment for the chief engineer. I T has two items on annual maintenance renewal for the prosecutor system and a renewal agreement with Megabytes, which is our property tax agree, software. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. At this time, we'll move to closed session as outlined by council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item, conference with labor negotiators is being removed from the agenda. The board will consider one item in closed session today. Conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, a worker's compensation matter as identified on the agenda. I'll turn it back to you for public comment.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment out there? Seeing none, well, this meeting is adjourned and we have coming up, we're an hour late for California Public Finance Authority and community, California Community Housing Agency, which will be as soon as we get the computer chains over. Thank you.